Eileen, good evening. Can you please open up the meeting?
Zoning Board of Adjustment, Howell Township, Monday, November 4th, 2024. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 11th, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on December 11th, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on December 11th, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and the rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV-77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barillo.
Here.
Mr. Kanter.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Roscoe is absent. Mr. Ryan.
Present.
Ms. Scottson.
Here.
And Chairman Sayah.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Will everyone please join me for the Pledge of Eligience? And let the record show that Mr. Roscoe is joining us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Randy, can you have a swearing-in of the professionals, please?
Do you swear the testimony and give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes, just please state your names for the record.
Glenn Gurkin, T&amp;M Associates.
Jennifer Bean.
Shari Spiro.
Your professional is for you.
Thank you, sir. Item five, approval of minutes, regular meeting, September 23rd, 2024. Eligible voters: Barillo, Kanter, Hughes, Mertens, Ryan, Scottson, and Sayah. Have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Thank you. Do we have any vouchers?
No vouchers tonight.
Do we have any correspondence?
I have two things for correspondence. The stormwater management training still needs to be completed by one member, so the township will be in compliance.
Okay.
And the second thing for correspondence, I would like to discuss and approve the meeting dates for 2025. If not, I request to approve at least four meetings in the beginning, so I can schedule some applicants.
Got it. Board members, have you all looked at the calendar for next year?
Yeah, as we discussed earlier, we're better off going with September 15th instead of the 22nd.
Yeah.
And the only other consideration would be, I'm not a microphone.
The only other consideration would be that October 6th is the first night of Sukkot, which if there's really observant people, it would be an issue.
I would think the 20th and 27th, you know, that's one on top of each other, but at least it'd be away from all the holidays, yeah?
That's fine.
So what do you think?
That works.
That works.
Eileen?
And then also, I'm sorry, April 7th, right, Eileen, not the 14th because of Passover?
Correct, yep.
Seems like all the Jewish holidays are Monday this year, next year.
Okay, anybody else? So everybody's in favor of the three adjustments, April 7th vice the 14th, September 15th vice the 22nd, and October 20th vice October 6th, 2025. Eileen, you tracking?
Yes.
Got it. Do you need an approval from every one member here?
Yes.
All right, roll call, please.
Motion to approve.
Yes.
Second.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Meeting date approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, resolutions. Do we have any resolutions today?
We have two. I sent them out after the agenda.
After the agenda, so I don't have them in front of me.
Uh, you want, do you want me to read them?
Please do.
Okay. Case number BA 2324, Christopher Kapsiskas, resolution granting bulk variances. Eligible voters: Barillo, Kanter, Hughes, Mertens, Ryan, Scottson, and Sayah. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're not to vote. Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Okay, the second one.
Case number BA 19-23 SP, Yeshivas Emek Hattora, resolution granting use variance and final major site plan. Eligible voters: Kanter, Hughes, Mertens, Ryan, Scottson, and Sayah. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Thank you. Okay, applications before the board. Tonight, we're going to begin with case number BA 23-18, Cranberry Road Holdings. This is a conditional use variance, bulk variance, and preliminary and final major site plan approval. Application of Cranberry Road Holdings as applicant and owner seeking conditional use variance, bulk and variance, and preliminary and final major site plan approval for the construction of a 2,130-square-foot office building for a contractor's use with associated parking, equipment, trailer storage, and outdoor material storage in the SED 1 zone on premises known as Block 184, Lot 24, 383 Cranberry Road. This application was previously heard on January 22nd, 2024. Expiration date, November 30th, 2024. And the eligible vote is our Barillo, Kanter, Hughes, Mertens, Roscoe, Scottson, and Sayah. Ryan, Scottson, and Sayah. Wow, it's been a whole year.
Almost, yes.
All right, let's talk.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John Sardo from Giordano Haller and Cisla, attorney-free applicant, Cranberry Road Holdings LLC. I guess I'll just start out with a little refresher from where we were since it's been so long. The applicant is, as I mentioned, Cranberry Road Holdings, and the site at 383 Cranberry Road is presently improved with and used by the Esso Brothers Paving Business. It's a trade contractor business, and they've operated at that site for many years. They had been operating primarily out of a temporary trailer for years, which was created a problem, particularly with their CO. That temporary trailer's since been removed, and they obtained a planning board approval in 2021. We're here tonight seeking, again, primarily a modification to that approval, which would provide for a smaller office building. Many of the improvements and location of the improvements remain the same. When we were here in January, we didn't really get too far into the application before an issue was raised about the planning board approval and if the variances that had been granted had been perfected, which caused us to seek an adjournment to go back and perfect that approval, which I'm going to report to you that we have over the past several months. The approvals perfected, bonds posted, and the construction of the improvements along the frontage of the property, curbing, paving, and the like, which we'll tell you more about this evening, are under construction or completed with construction. And why do I bring that up? Because one of our significant variances that we need is with respect to the 50-foot residential buffer. This is a commercial site. Across Cranberry Road, we have the PRC Zone, which is approved with the existing Equestria Residential Development. And to the east, it's the ARE 6 Zone, which permits residential, although it's used commercially by the county presently. Again, we'll get into those details, but I wanted to give that background before we got started tonight.
John?
Yes, I can confirm that the applicant has been working for basically the better of the past year with community development, with Matt, with Claire, getting the sewer stuff all squared away. They have been working to perfect that planning board approval, which they have done. So now it's my opinion that they have to rely, they have the right to rely upon the relief that they received associated with that approval moving into this application.
Okay. Glenn, do we have anything to add, or?
Not particularly to that. I have been out at the site, and they have started and have completed some of the improvements along Cranberry Road, predominantly the curb radiuses and that coming into the site.
Great.
It is true that, yes, they have started construction on it.
Okay, all right, sir.
Yeah, I guess before, just some more background before I call my first witness is, we submitted some revised architectural plans, slightly modifying the design, and the board's professionals, T&amp;M and, I was about to say, excuse me, Ms. Beam issued review letters in advance of last week's meeting, so we'll be addressing the comments in those two letters. And my first witness will be Patrick Ward of Insight.
All right, let's have him sworn in.
Do you swear the testimony and give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell your last.
Patrick Ward, W-A-R-D, with Insight Engineering.
Randy, we're good?
Yeah, did he testify at the last hearing, John? I don't remember.
Yes.
He may want to just go through the qualifications briefly for the board.
Okay.
Yep. Sure. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Drexel University, been a licensed engineer for over 11 years, and I have testified in front of the Township's Planning Board numerous times and the Zoning Board a handful of times.
Your license in the state of New Jersey?
I am, yes.
Okay, we'll accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, I think what I'd like to start with, if we could pull up one of the, we submitted a few exhibits, and one is an aerial from, actually quite recently, from October 20th, if we can have that pulled up.
Maybe.
What I'll do is I'll start describing the property. So
This one?
We have a, got a three-acre lot located in the SED 1 zone. Hope this is picking me up there. No, that's better. As Mr. Sardo stated, Esso Brothers Paving currently owns and operates their business from the property. All of their paving operations emanate from the property.
I would just wait a second until the exhibit comes.
Yep, that's fine.
It's an overhead.
It's.
Do you have the exhibit number?
Yeah, it would be A25. Sorry, I was having trouble reading it from here. There we go. So we're seeking site plan approval based somewhat heavily on the 2021 approval to improve the property. The goal of the applicant is to provide their new administrative building. It's a local business. They don't need a terribly large office, but they have a handful of administrative employees that they want to make this their headquarters for all of their operations. So what you see here on A25 is the existing conditions, and this is as recent, this aerial's from October 20th of this year, so it really is a good snapshot. If whoever is running that, if you could zoom in a little bit more on the words Cranberry Road, what I think, the reason I have this exhibit updated to October 20th is really to show the board what's been done out there. And the big dark line that cuts across, it's a shadow from an existing solid fence.
Is that better?
Yep, that's perfect. Thank you so much. And what you could see are the curb entrances, the radii. There is some filling done behind the curb, and they have some of the base, the stone base for the parking lot paving, and that is the same curb alignment that was from the 2021 approval, carries through to the current plans in front of this board. The goal here was to start cleaning up the front of the property. I would say it's a paving operation, so there isn't anything that's beautiful out there, but the front was, for years, gravel, and all the employees would park, arguably maybe hanging out into the right-of-way a little bit with their vehicles. So we wanted to start from the front and demonstrate that, you know, this is where things are going. And I'll get into what this ultimately will look like with the color rendering. But we are on Cranberry Road. We're about a quarter mile east of the Cranberry Yellow Book Road intersection, and we're generally surrounded by similar uses. Off on the right side is the Monmouth County Highway Yard. To the south of us is a multiple-tenant contractor yard. You can kind of see the edge of it there. It's quite larger than our facility. To the west, we have a private commercial contractor yard, and across the street, you can see the tip of, the rear tip of Equestria, and then on the northwest side of this, that's the rear entrance to the George Harms Yard, just for frame of reference. So as you could see on this, the Equestria is surrounded by a 100-foot perimeter buffer, and as the property kind of turns away on that, the nearest street in Equestria, you could tell we have a somewhat significant distance between the rear of those homes and what, where our property begins and where some of our operations will be. Today, and you can see on here, the site is nearly entirely impervious surface. It's a combination of pavement sections and compacted gravel that's been traversed quite a bit by their vehicles. What we're proposing are two curb cuts or access points from the property. I mentioned before that that dark line across the property is the shadow from a chain-link fence with some screening on it. And the applicant right now uses the area in front of the fence for employee parking, and then, actually not in this snapshot because it was being actively constructed. Behind that is where all the operations were. It's the business end of the property, like I like to say, where all the equipment and operations emanate from. So behind the fence, we have a couple of structures that are existing, proposed to remain. And one of the structures that was actually proposed to be removed has been removed. There was a temporary construction trailer that was been there for several years. That's been removed, which I think is positive, seen positively in the eyes of the Township Administration. So what else is there? We have an existing masonry garage, which, I'm going to use my green, it's right here, kind of a unique-looking structure with a unique stone siding. Temporary construction trailer's been removed, and in the bottom left, that gray square is, we call it a Quonset hut. It's like an arched hut structure, a little bigger than a hut. It's used as a maintenance garage currently. On the property, you could see on the west side, there are some delineated parking spaces in the back for passenger vehicles and some assigned work truck parking. And then along the east and southern side, there are some enclosed storage trailers, which this image doesn't quite do it justice. The storage trailers are on this side, and in the back, you could see some vehicles, and there's some material storage bins and other items stored out in the open. As you could see, their equipment, some of their equipment is shown on this image, and they have it arranged in a way that, and, you know, parked in a way that works for them so they can get in and out. If you could pull up the current rendering, I don't know what that was marked as, but with that list, I could probably tell you. And I'll describe what we're proposing to do. So the one right below it, A26.
A26?
Yes, ma'am. Perfect. So this is really showing the end result. So we're intending to clean up and upgrade the site, really particularly clean up the front, so it doesn't really scream contractor paving yard, and then the rear will be cleaned up, paved in spaces where you could see, which will make more sense, preserve the existing buildings, propose this new office building. So what we're proposing is this office headquarters building, relatively small, 21, 130 square feet. It's a single-story structure with a gable roof. That's the newest change from the most recent submission. There is no showroom for this type of use. I know that was a comment, a question really raised in the planning review letter. There are no, there is no showroom needed for a use like this, and we don't propose one. We are proposing along the southern side, five new cleaned-up storage, material storage bins. They'll be constructed with an eight-foot-tall perimeter called Mafia Block Wall and a concrete slab base. We are relocating the four enclosed storage trailers to the south property line, as you can see, and then also at the rear is going to be a trash enclosure. So how does this compare to the 2021 approval? The layout of the property and the limits of development are more or less unchanged. The extent of pavement, gravel, final gravel and actual asphalt is less than what was approved in 2021. The final plans for the 2021 approval were at 83.26% impervious. We're now at 80.47%. In 2021, the big difference is the main, the main building, the office building. We actually had proposed a wider, taller building. There's more office space. There was actually a large kind of open-air meeting space that was covered, and three large maintenance garages. One large building that actually would have replaced that masonry building that we're keeping. It would have gone all the way across here. In lieu of these structures, we're proposing a smaller office building, which presents a smaller facade to the right-of-way. The existing garage in the front of the yard is to remain, and I mentioned the, an unusual siding, stone siding. We're proposing to re-side that to match the siding on the proposed office building. The garage at the rear, the Quonset hut, is to remain as is. Both of these garages currently function for internal maintenance of some of their equipment, and that function will remain unchanged. All the buildings that I mentioned are accessory in nature to the main operations or headquarters office building that we're proposing. This is and will be a single-user site. One other change that isn't shown on here, but it's worth mentioning, the applicant initially proposed truck canopies, open-air truck canopies on the west and east sides that were about four feet off the property lines. Those are no longer proposed, so we're taking more structure away with this version of the final proposal. And now finally, with the front, everything from like the fence line to the north here is virtually unchanged from the last planning board approval. I'll get into some of the landscaping and what we're doing out there, but we're proposing to completely clean up the employee vehicle parking, landscape it, and provide a nice streetscape on Cranberry Road. Couple other things about the site. Township master plan called for Cranberry Road to be a 60-foot-wide right-of-way. Currently, it's 50. So as such, in order to provide our necessary half-width, the applicant has dedicated five feet across this frontage to achieve that right-of-way width. You could see the new driveway entrances and exits that will be provided. The west driveway will be an entrance, and the east will be an exit, and that circulation will continue through to the back. Again, the employee parking is going to be up front, north of the fence, and that'll be completely redone. The curb is in, new pavement will be done, and the landscaping will be done, all in front of the main building fences and gates. The main building is about 92 feet from the new dedication line along Cranberry Road. Previously, it was 85 feet, so we're actually pulling the building back seven feet. A solid vinyl fence is proposed on either side of the office building. The front side of, front facade is going to act as part of the barrier there, so the fence will die into each side. The driveways to the rear yard will be separated from the front parking lot with solid sliding gates as well. The goal here is to utilize the fencing, the gates, and the front facade of the building to visually screen the rear yard and its contents from the public view shed. The applicant will provide Knox boxes at both gates for emergency vehicle access as well. So behind the gates, it's a typical contractor yard for a paving contractor, albeit what we're proposing is a substantial improvement over what's out there today. The majority of the yard will be paved, as shown, that darker gray is limits of asphalt pavement, with some gravel areas at the rear where pavement is not necessary. We have 17 delineated spaces in the rear. They're larger spaces delineated for assigned work truck spacing. So the way that their operations work, they have a handful of vehicles, but they have assigned parking so that they're closer to the headquarters building. The company has 65 total vehicles. We include 36 trucks and 29 trailers as all vehicles. We're not combining any of them. That's really for the fleet vehicle requirement of the trade contractor use, but a unique aspect of the paving contractor business in this use, due to the nature of their operations, most of their vehicles go from worksite 1 to worksite 2 directly. They don't all come back, you know, park, and then have to remobilize. So mobilization, as long as they stay busy, which they are, they'll just go from site to site, and that's kind of a unique operation here with that trade contractor use. If, for some reason, this is probably not a great reason, they all had to be back at the property at headquarters, the rear yard is large enough to put all the vehicles in it, not necessarily in a perfect, you know, commercial parking lot order, but they can stack them up, and there's plenty of room back there for all their vehicles. Another point of clarification that was raised in the T&amp;M review letter, all the fleet vehicles are intended to be stored in the rear yard. The front parking lot is for passenger vehicles, for the employees, and those employees include some of the, you know, the handful of office workers, but a lot of them are the field workers. We do have a area right in the middle for tractor-trailer parking. It's going to be striped. It's a little tough to see on here, but there's a yellow box right there. That is for, you know, kind of a dedicated open space when trailers do have to come in and for, things have to be loaded or unloaded. It's a central area. It works for their operation. And again, circulation will mimic the front. We'll have one-way circulation around the yard from west to east, and enough room to circulate around that trailer parking area between the buildings. For stormwater management, just kind of a general overview, first, we will comply with the board engineer comments. I know they were looking for some stormwater management calculations. We did some of that behind the scenes before this meeting. We have no issue. We're confident that will meet all the conditions or review comments noted in that letter, so no issue there. We are seeking to reduce existing coverage on site by about 25,000 square feet. Like right now, today, like I said, it's basically almost all impervious. Right now, elevation's on site generally sloped from the front to the back. We're seeking to mimic that condition by virtue of reducing the amount of coverage on site that we are. We're reducing the amount of runoff generated by the project, improving the existing conditions. And our stormwater analysis is complying with the township's ordinance requirements for major development, which was noted in the T&amp;M review, and we'll prove that happily if approved by the board as a condition. Utilities here, the site will be served by public sewer. Interesting tidbit for prior approval, the sewer was extended by the applicant up Cranberry Road to this property. We will finally connect properly to it. Water publicly is available, and so is gas and electric. So no wells, no septic systems are existing or proposed. For landscaping and lighting, we're proposing what we find to be appropriate landscaping around the main building and within the front parking area. We have a series of foundation plantings on the north and east sides of the main building. We are going to propose, going to propose mechanical equipment. This is one of the things raised by one of the board professionals, on the east side of the building. Probably only need one condenser for that small building. It'll be located there, screened by the proposed plantings. Along Cranberry Road, we're proposing six street trees, as required by ordinance, and a series of evergreens between them. A series of medium-sized shrubs are proposed along the edges of the parking stalls. The center landscaped area along Cranberry Road will be bermed up about three feet above grade. Other ground cover, like juniper, lily turf, and some river rock areas are proposed as well to enhance the parking area and driveways. So that landscape plan was developed, and this is going back to 2021, with the neighbors in mind, notably the Equestria Development to the north. We understand that we're not proposing the buffer as defined in the ordinance and what we got relief for previously, but we're seeking to enhance Equestria's currently existing 100-foot perimeter buffer with our landscape arrangement. We feel that the berm and the shrubs will screen any vehicle headlights facing Cranberry, and the street trees and evergreen trees proposed along the right-of-way will enhance the aesthetics of the property from any northern view shed. We are proposing four lights and one building-mounted fixture in the front parking lot, and in the rear yard, we're proposing a series of building-mounted and pole-mounted fixture, lighting fixtures, with the goal of illuminating the critical areas of the yard, your parking areas, your pavement around the buildings, some truck parking areas, and the refuse area. The streetscape and lighting is similar to the 2021 approval, with some minor landscaping changes due to the change in building locations and the fence line. For parking and traffic, we're proposing, we're providing 45 passenger vehicle spaces on site, two of which are ADA. For parking and traffic, we're proposing, we're providing forty-five passenger vehicle spaces on site, two of which are ADA. This meets and exceeds the required parking for this use based on the building size. In terms of traffic changes, it's important, we feel that there's a minimal traffic change. Today, operationally, from the construction side of things, this use intensity of the precise, of the site and business is not changing. That doesn't change with this application. So the proposal before the board is for the new administrative office building, the proposal for traffic changes is for the new administrative office building and some of the layout improvements on site. Conservatively, based on available IT data, which is you, using a number of, uh, using the number of single tenant office spaces as the variable. The addition of the office building would generate up to twenty-nine additional trips per day for the passenger vehicles. We feel this will be a de minimis impact on the current traffic condition of Cranberry Road and the local road network. Again, the construction vehicle operation of the paving company is not changing, not proposed to be expanded or changed as a result of this proposal. In terms of signage, we're proposing three. And this actually, this proposal has been condensed since 2021.
Jen, you're good with the signage?
I am.
Okay, we're good. Go ahead.
We have one small, it was bigger before. We have one facade sign on the front face of the building. And then the two gates, uh, the Esso Brothers Paving Company has, uh, their signature diamond badge sign that we're going to put on the gates. So we're proposing that. And we're also proposing which a thirty foot tall flag pole at the northwest corner of the building. That's the same from 2021. And the goal is to fly the American flag on the pole if the board approves. And John, that would be my direct if there are any questions for engineering.
Okay, so Glenn, did we answer all the T and M?
I believe you did. Just again for the record, what is the proposed impervious coverage? Was that the eighty point something percentage?
Yeah, I just want to get that one second. Eighty point four seven.
Okay, we're seventy percent permitted, but it's a reduction from, substantial reduction from what's around ninety-one percent in the prior approval.
Correct.
Also with the drainage, although it is a major drainage application, since it serves more than one acre of ground, there's an overall reduction in the impervious coverage and therefore a total reduction in the, uh, quantity of, of water flow off of that area. So they are in conformance with the, the state and your ordinance on that.
Great, thank you. Anything else Glenn?
Just one question with it. Under waivers, uh, lighting, you said there was what, four pole lights in the front? The ordinance requires a point, point three foot candle minimum. I understand maybe on the whole site it doesn't meet that, but does the front parking area itself meet that?
Yes. It's just the rear that we don't meet it in every corner of that property.
Yeah, so the predominant car parking lot area will conform and the back will not, which is the contractor's yard.
Yes.
Can I just ask about hours of operation? Do you have lighting timers and do they go off?
The, the proposed fixtures are dimmable and can be timed. So we can, we can do that.
Jen?
I don't think I have anything for him.
I mean, we've come a long way.
We have.
Yeah.
And they have worked really hard this past year to get to where we are now.
Okay, board members for the, uh, for the engineer, any questions? No. Mr. Giordano?
I'll ask Pat just to sit here for a moment, but, uh, I'd like to just pull up the architectural plans too, just to show the board what's proposed. Is that in your drive?
Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
Sorry, falling down on the job. This one eight twenty?
Yes.
This?
Nope. Sorry. No, it's, it'll be a later one. That's the prior one.
I don't know.
Eight twenty-one Jen?
It was in there.
There is no eight twenty.
There is no eight twenty-one.
There you go. Yes, this is. And actually, if you can go to the last sheet in that set, you'll see what the, uh, the existing masonry. So this is like the streetscape. You can kind of see the two buildings next to each other and what the landscaping generally will, will look like or try, will try to achieve. So the wall signs on there, the badge. And, uh, like I said, the goal is to screen everything at the rear from the public. And I'll note that we've added the, um, the roof. It was previously a flat roof. This better meets the requirements of the ordinance that pointed out in the review letter. Uh, but yeah, you'll see the signage on the bottom there as well. I figured it was worth bringing this up and seeing.
And Jen, you're good with this architectural?
I am.
Okay. Um, you have any other professionals that are?
Uh, I do. I have a professional planner that can address the variances we need.
We're ready for the planner? Jen, we're ready for the planner?
I am.
Okay, let's do it.
Thank you, board.
Do you swear the testimony and give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you go?
I do.
Say your name for the record, spell your last.
Robert Hudak, H U D A K, and I'm with Inside Engineering.
And would you mind putting your credentials on the record?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I've been a professional planner for over ten years. I, my master's degree is from Villanova University. My undergrad is from Montclair State University. I've appeared before numerous boards throughout the state of New Jersey. But I have, man, have the distinct honor of serving before this board.
And so you're licensed?
My licenses are up to date and.
In New Jersey.
In good standing.
I have a question for you, sir. Were you part of the 2021 planning board approval?
I was not.
Ah, so new perspective. Okay, let's hear it.
What, what was that Jen? Fresh me, yeah.
He wasn't here again.
Essentially.
We'll accept your credentials, sir. All right, let's do it.
So as you're well aware, this site's located in the SED's Special Economic Development Zone One. Where back in 2021, we met, there were no conditions. This was a permitted use within the zone at that time. It is now a conditional use requiring us, since we are not meeting all the conditions, requiring us to come before this board. To the north, as you've noted, you have the equestria, the PRC zone. You have industrial uses to the east, south and west. Although to the east where the county yard is, it's in the A R E six zone. The rest of the, to the east and south, it is the SED one zone, which contains commercial uses. So with respect to the variances being sought, I'm going to first talk about the, the D three variance we're seeking. We don't comply specifically with the material storage minimum setbacks from the side in rear, which are required to meet either the ten foot or the fifty foot buffer requirement. We're at eight feet eleven inches from the east side and seventeen feet from the rear. We also don't comply with the maximum permitted office space, which is twenty-five percent we're limited to. We're at twenty-five point three percent. And also the minimum buffer set, the fifty foot buffer setback from the adjacent residential zones to the north and east. We're providing a less than fifty foot buffer to the north and there's no buffer to the east. With any, with respect to.
Before you go forward.
Yes.
Those buffers were evaluated as part of the site plan application before the planning board, correct?
Yes.
And relief was granted for the buffer at that time?
Yes, correct. Yeah, I was just going to say that we had several previously approved variances in court, specifically the buffer. The structures and parking with the outdoor storage within the buffer, that was previously approved in 2021. The buffer itself, how it consists of a four season buffer with landscaping, including a six foot high berm and ten foot wall, that was also previously granted in 2021. The signage, there's a maximum permitted one sign. There were two signs that were permitted back in 2021 under the relief. The impervious surface coverage, as you also heard, was granted at around ninety-one percent. We're now going to, as you've heard, eighty point forty-seven. So with respect to the D three criteria, the focus of the application, or I should say on the board's review, is based upon whether or not the site can accommodate the problems associated with the use. In our case, with respect to the buffer specifically to the east, these properties are, although they're zoned residential, contain the county storage yard. The buffer and setbacks are really designed to provide a visual screen from residential uses. So in, in essence, the buffers and the setbacks wouldn't really serve that purpose because you have commercial uses immediately adjacent to our property. Also providing additional landscaping in the front addresses those issues though, which are previously approved variances. We are complying with those. And as noted by the engineer, there's already about a hundred and fifty foot buffer, if you will, because you have the, the right, the fifty-five foot right of way plus the hundred and fifty foot, um, conservation easement to the north of the subject site. So we're significantly far away from the residential properties to the north. And the application we're seeking tonight reduces the impervious surfaces. It also results in a, a better, more aesthetically pleasing building rather than the trailers on site. And these changes improve the site aesthetics, reducing the visual impact of the existing use. Also the organized store, outdoor storage, designated parking, reinforce operational efficiency, minimize disruption to the surroundings and support the applicant's commitment to conform as much as possible to the zone's intended standards. The office space is really de minimis. We're talking about point three percent, which won't result, in my opinion, in a real visible change. By the naked eye, you really won't see point three percent. It's also deep within the property, so I doubt that it'll really create any issues, if you will. Given the proposal includes measures to approve upon the previously approved elements, such as log coverage and other deviations that won't distract from the property's intended and existing use, the improvements align with the municipal and uses goal to foster well planned development that balances industrial functionality with compatibility with adjacent uses. With respect to the positive criteria for the C variances we seek, and again, these were all previously approved. I don't know how much you want me to opine on them, but basically we're advancing several purposes zoning, including purpose A, the general welfare, because the site is appropriate for the use because obviously this is a conditionally, but it is a permitted use in the site. We're also improving upon what's existing there and what was approved. Purpose C, the adequate light, air and open space. The office space that we're really, that we're proposing, which is really the, the nuts and bolts of this application tonight, provide adequate light, air and open space. We meet all those setback requirements. And of course, purpose I, the desirable visual environment is met because we are making the site more aesthetically pleasing to people passing by. We also, with respect to the other prong, the better zoning alternative, the buffer to the north, we are providing something that currently doesn't exist. We're providing that buffer. We've also received relief from that requirement. The outdoor storage, again, were adjacent to commercial uses. There's really not any benefit to the neighbor to the east. The county's going to continue using that site as they see fit. Uh, adding the buffer would not really, would just reduce visible, usable areas within our site. And with respect to the signs, they address the safety purposes of zoning for wayfinding purposes. It's a much better improvement. Of course, no variance can be granted without finding of the negative criteria, that there won't be any substantial detriment to the public good. Again, we're approving the site. We're making it more aesthetically pleasing. So there will be a positive impact of our site. In addition, the office building will improve working conditions on site and overall aesthetics. So in my opinion, there is no detriment to the public good. And with respect to any impairments to the intent and purpose of the zoning plan and the master plan, the trade contractor use is a permitted use of that with certain conditions. But the deviations really don't result in any significant impairment. Uh, the proposed signs will comply with the ordinance respect total permitted area. The landscaping buffer will improve the site beyond what it is currently and beyond what was approved. And similarly, the project will reduce impervious cover, meeting your master plan goals of maintaining consistency with the purpose of the N L U L. And the project advances those purposes. So with respect to the variances, I think on balance, the board can grant them based on the proofs presented tonight.
Thank you, sir. Board members, any questions for the planner? Jen?
Nope.
We're good. Okay. Well, thank you, sir. Um, let's open it to public. I'll make a motion to open the public. All in favor?
Aye.
The board will now open to the public. If you'd like to come up, state your name and your address.
Sir?
Les Mendel, forty-six West Da Vinci Way.
Do you swear the testimony to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Say your name and address for the record.
Les Mendel, forty-six West Da Vinci Way.
This is questions for the planner or the engineer? Or are you just making comments, sir?
I'm not sure which, so let me start with comments and then we'll see if there's questions. Okay? All right. Um, so I, I live in Equestria, uh, close to where the, uh, the Esso location is, Cranberry Road Holdings. I understand having, um, industrial zones next to residential zones, there's issues. There's always issues. There's noise issues for the residential. Sometimes there's traffic issues. But the idea of the buffer was to help to alleviate those, those kind of issues.
So before we get too deep in the wilderness on the buffer, they already got approved for the buffer that they're being provided. And if they didn't come here to reduce the size of the building, they could build it based on their two thousand twenty-one approval where they got the relief for the buffer. They're not asking for any changes to that.
Well, I thought that at the January zoning board meeting, that it was said that because they hadn't done anything to perfect their earlier approval and the zoning had changed, they needed new approvals from here.
So they have a right to rely upon the relief. Variance is realm with the land. Um, but we, at the time, last January, they had not finalized their approval. What we discussed when they first started the application is the reason that they've, it's taken them so long to get back here is they have perfected that approval. They've perfected it. They've posted all their bonds and that, that's why they started the site work. So they do have that relief and they're entitled to rely upon it. At the time, at the last meeting, the reason why we weren't allowing them to rely upon the relief is that they hadn't finalized their approvals. That has happened now. So they are relying upon the relief that they received. And if, if the board says no, they're still allowed to build what they got approved in 2021, which is a bigger building with the flat roof, which is less aesthetically pleasing. So I, I'm not trying to jump on your time. You have as much time as you need. But I just, I'm just advising the board. They did perfect those approvals. They have the right to rely upon the relief that they already received. And if this board says no, they're going to build what they got approved in 2021, which in my opinion is worse. Is worse, is a worse scenario with a bigger building, with a more industrial look. This looks a little bit more residential, which, um, and they've added landscaping and other amenities or improvements from the last approval to make it less obnoxious. I get it. I understand the concern, but they do have approvals on the site. And so the, the, the buffer is the buffer. That was approved and the variance was granted.
And it was, it was granted with a three foot berm rather than a six foot?
It was granted as they have it designed, yes.
Okay, well then maybe I'll be asking the, uh, the applicant if they can be helpful to do more improving of that to cause a little bit more buffering between, uh, for example, with the berm. If you made it a six foot instead of a three foot. Um, yes, there is land between the houses and the street and the property. But the, uh, there is also noise and, you know, they, um, this is something that could be done. The, when the county road department built their berm several years ago, it did significantly help with the noise. So, uh, as participating in the community, please consider, and to the zoning board, please consider when there's future applicants, that you keep in mind the compromise here with the residents and the industrial uses to please keep the berm, keep the, uh, the, the, the buffer zones in the future.
Thank you, Les. Mr. Giordano? Would your applicant be willing?
John Sardo. He got a promotion.
Um, would the applicant be willing to give us six foot versus three foot on the berm?
I'd have to consult with my engineer to see if the, that's something that we have room to do or could be viable.
Yeah, I was just gonna, um, as much as I'd like to have more buffering for them. If you put a six foot berm in that very small space, the trees are not in the ground. They're going to be up, high up in the berm and they're more likely to die because they're more exposed to the elements that way.
So you'll have to change some of the species, right, that are in the berm?
In the current berm?
No, I don't, I think what she's saying is that because it's such a narrow space and it's going to be up, down, regardless of what you put there, it would be difficult for them to get to the actual ground, right?
Right. It's just, it's just.
But marrying up with what the county did on the property next door to it.
They have wider. Yeah, it's more space.
They have more width. So you need to be able to grade it up and down. You can't go vertical. It won't stay there. I would suggest maybe working with Shari in terms of maybe not increasing the height of the berm, but maybe alter, like changing maybe some of the species types to make it more of a permanent four-season screen. You know what I mean?
Can we do that?
Instead of, instead of some deciduous which will lose the leaves in the wintertime?
We, I mean, we typically always agree to work with Shari, make sure everything's to the township's liking. One other item is the site distance. The taller the berm is between the entrances, these are some larger trucks at times that come in and out of there, so we don't want to limit visibility on Cranberry and cause or diminish safety exiting. That's something that actually the applicant has asked me multiple times, even within 21, and what is this going to look like for getting in and out of there? Our plans do show compliance with the required site distance, but the higher the ground goes, you get into that 30-inch limit there.
I think the answer is yes, we'll work with Ms. Sparrow.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else?
Good evening. I'm John Skrletts from 42 West Da Vinci.
Just have to swear. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your names, spell your last and your address, please.
John Skrletts, S-K-R-L-E-T-T-S, 42 West Da Vinci.
Thank you, sir.
So I thank you for bringing that up. That was one of the questions, whether or not the species could be changed. There is not, you know, there's not a very strong screening in there with evergreens. There is a loss of, excuse me, of foliage between us now. Matter of fact, I could see it very clearly. I literally live right behind them. There was two other things, issues raised, I believe, in the reports. I don't remember if it was the engineering report or if it was the planner's report, both of dealing with compliance with the noise ordinances as well as question about the hours of operation and those changing between the previous. So I was wondering if those could be addressed.
The hours of operation are 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, seven days a week. I think there was a question that was raised in the engineering review letter that dated back to other hours that were proposed in 2015 approval, but were slightly different. But what's proposed is what's expected, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The high, the major time of year when they're in full operation is in the warmer months. That's when you'll have more employees in that front field parking. And during the winter months, you're going to be like a quarter of the staff, so you'll have about a quarter of full staff in the employee lot.
The concern really is, it's more with the noise issues. Parking lot is an issue. There is an employee who basically drives a mobile base speaker that comes in at about 5:30 and plays it for a while every morning. That's a concern. The other part is that when the trucks return, and by the way, they're not always by 6:00 o'clock and sometimes it's in the middle of the night, when they do dump whatever spoilage they have left, it's quite loud. So, you know, noise compliance is a concern.
So here in Howell, the county is the arbiter of the noise. The town has adopted a state noise ordinance and the county is the regulator of that noise. But I just want to make it abundantly clear that the noise ordinance doesn't say no noise. It says consistent noise for 15 minutes. And 15 minutes is a long time. And we run into that issue with like dogs barking, where a dog will bark for 10 minutes and then stop and then start again. That's not a violation of the noise ordinance.
There's also intermittent noise.
So you would have to call, if you have an issue with the noise, you have to call the county. They'll come out with the meters and measure the noise. We don't regulate that.
Thank you.
Anyone else in public? Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Eileen, we're closed to public.
The meeting is now closed to public.
Brief summation from my standpoint, we're asking that the board approve the application, grant the variance as requested. As already discussed, this would, and specifically by Ms. Beam, what we're seeking to do here is to actually slightly reduce the intensity of what's already approved on the site and get something approved that works better for the applicant as well. I think it will be a welcomed improvement once it's constructed, given the condition that the property's been in for many years. Will result in a nice streetscape and kind of bring closure to the issue that's been lingering, to put it plainly. So we're asking that the board grant this approval.
Thank you, sir. So board members, what's the pleasure of the board here? Oh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve this application. Mr. Hughes?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Scottson. Is she, oh, wait, would Jose here?
Oh, I can't. Sorry.
Sorry, Emery.
I will then second the motion.
Mr. Ryan will second. Okay, very good. Mr. Hughes, Mr. Ryan. Eileen Rolco, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Shari, you'll, you'll work closely with them, yes?
Yes.
Okay, great. My, yes.
Application's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, so the next case is going to be BA-24-07, 1805 US-9 LLC. The board's going to take five.
Board will now take a five-minute break and reconvene at 8:02.
Eileen, we're back.
The meeting will now reconvene.
Okay, in front of us is case number BA-24-07, 1805 US-9 LLC. This is a use variance and preliminary and final major site plan. Application of 1805 US-9 as applicant and owner seeking use variance in preliminary and final major site plan approval for improvements to the existing building facade, stormwater management system, onsite circulation, lighting and site improvements on 1805 Route 9, Block 144, Lot 73 dot 01. This application was previously heard on October 7th when it was carried to November 4th, expiration date 27 November 2024. Eligible boaters, Barillo, Hughes, Mertens, Roscoe, Ryan, Scottson and Cantor. Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Has that you read qualified board members? Are you a qualified board member?
No, I'm not.
Oh.
But we have seven here.
Wonderful. Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
This is an application for, not, not development, but for redoing, cleaning up the existing site at 1805 Route 9. The existing site is approximately 5.3 acres and the buildings that are shown on the exhibit that is before you are buildings that exist at this time. There's no request by the applicant to expand those buildings. The applicant is proposing, as was presented by Mr. Zogner at the last meeting, the applicant is proposing to redo the site. Those re-dos on the site are the introduction of a drainage system where there is none. The drainage system would be a modern drainage system, significantly modifying the circulation. Currently, in the south...
East corner?
Correct. In the southeast corner, there's a dead end. And what is proposed is to have circulation around the entire site, eliminate the dead end. There was testimony that that design was reviewed by your fire chief and the plan that we presented is consistent with his recommendations. We are introducing environmental controls. No one did a wetland delineation on this. The applicant did and is respecting the wetlands that are located in front of the property. The applicant has a landscape plan that has been presented to Ms. Sparrow for her review and I'm going to ask if she would confirm on the record before we conclude that we have met with her requirements. There's a new lighting plan. It's an LED lighting plan. There's testimony that was placed on the record by Mr. Zogner at the last meeting. And that testimony was confirmed by Mr. Kuntliff who indicated that, Mr. Zogner indicated he was working with Mr. Kuntliff to provide an LED lighting system consistent with his requirements. The core of that was 4,000 Kelvin lighting, all LED, all down lighting, all lighting that could be controlled. The applicant is tying the entire project into water and sewer. Right now, it's not on water and sewer. The applicant agreed during the last hearing that they would resurface all of the parking lots and all of the driveways. Initially, we had asked for an opportunity to do partial, the request of this board was that the applicant resurface everything. The answer is yes. There was a request made by, to the applicant at the last meeting that the sidewalk along Route, we had asked that we be permitted to do a contribution and the request of the board was that we have a sidewalk along Route 9. We'll add the sidewalk along Route 9. It's my recollection that the sidewalk around the jug handle was not a requirement and that could be a contribution. I'm hoping I recall that correctly and we've agreed to that. There was a request that we have Title 39 designation in place and we agreed that we would do Title 39. There's additional parking. There's no new buildings, but there's seven new parking spaces. There's also EV charging stations and handicap parking. All of that is not in existence at this time. That was the testimony that was presented by Mr. Zogner to the board at the last hearing and was commented on by the professionals. I did not intend to call Mr. Zogner again because that is now part of the record, but I've asked that he join me just in case there are any questions or concerns now or later in the evening with regard to his testimony. There was a question raised as to the drainage pit that is under the car wash. There is a drainage pit under the car wash. It was a mystery. The mystery's gone away. It's not a mystery. There was no sanitary sewer system for the car wash. There was a big, I'm going to call it a holding tank. I like to call it a vestigial remnant because we're going to tie that car wash into the sanitary sewer system and that vestigial remnant will be gone. Its purpose is, it's no longer there, so it'll be removed. That was the engineering testimony. We had gone through the staff, Mr. Kuntliff's reports, and I believe that we had satisfied Mr. Kuntliff on all of his concerns. We had then gone to the testimony of the, one of the principals about the operation of a business and that's where we stopped. And with permission, first I'd like to confirm with the board and the board's staff that the engineering testimony is as I've outlined and wonder if anyone wants me to go any deeper with this.
Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Zogner?
No, I don't.
Okay. Glenn?
I just have a little hard time hearing you, Ken, but with regard to the drives and parking areas, are they going to totally resurface that whole area?
Every bit of it.
Okay, because it needs it.
We're going to, we'll mill and resurface.
Yeah, and then restrike all the parking.
Restripe all the parking. More parking, larger parking stalls, EV stations and handicap.
And you have one well that is there where the drive that's going to connect your southerly building around to the front parking area that has to get capped and removed?
All the health department requirements will be, septic and wells are being abandoned.
Okay.
No septic and wells.
Thank you.
So what you have is an applicant who purchased the property and it's all improvements. With the applicant, there are two gentlemen who are the applicant. They're here this evening and they are seated in the first row, Mr. Martin Mormon and Mr. Jacobs. Mr. Jacobs, they're partners in the property. Mr. Jacobs proposes to operate his business from building number one, which is the building on the screen that is to the left of the diagram. I spoke to your attorney and to your planner. I asked for permission if I could proffer to the board for efficiency purposes what the business would be, and I have no objections from the board's, your board professionals if that is acceptable.
It's acceptable, sir.
Thank you. I had spent considerable time with the client, going over his business operation. His business operation has been in existence for a number of years. He operates his business on a full-time basis with a single shift. The business is operated with eight full-time administrative employees. There are four outside salesmen and seven warehousemen. The eight full-time administrative personnel will be in an office element, just a few minutes from now, Mr. Rudasti will walk you through where the office element is. The office element is clearly shown on Mr. Rudasti's plans and it's approximately 3,500 square feet. It's part of the existing building. Our client's business is an established operation. They are a wholesale-to-wholesale distributor of three products, vitamins, nutrition supplements and small electronics. They purchase vitamins, the supplements and small electronics in bulk. They come to them in, on pallets and they sell them strictly wholesale. They are not fulfillment centers. They're not in the retail business. They're not in the internet business. They are wholesale-to-wholesale. The product is on their site for short periods of time ranging from a few days to up to three months. They also process returns of electric, electronic products that are received damaged or inoperable. Sometimes they're sent back, they have to send them back to the original salesperson. They have two business locations, one currently. One is in Delaware and one is in Lakewood. The Lakewood is a rental property that they intend to close. The Lakewood operation will be brought to this building with your permission. They own two trucks, a cargo van and a box truck. These two trucks communicate, commute daily, Monday to Thursday and occasionally on Friday, but Monday to Thursday, they go back and forth between Delaware and this site. They are their own trucks. That's the trucks that are, that they are using on a daily basis. They do not engage in any weekend activity. They're prepared to state there will be no weekend activity. After the last meeting, we carefully went over their tractor-trailer movements. I spent some time with the client to make sure that we got all the tractor-trailer movements. It was a little awkward the last time as Mr. Jacobs was recalling, then there was another one and then, there's 18 tractor-trailer movements maximum on a 30-day period. 18 tractor-trail movements during a 30-day period. They anticipate that the tractor-trailer and the tractor-trailers is bringing the product to them. That's what's occurring when the tractor-trails arrive. Tractor-trails typically come to the site, discharge their cargo and on some occasions bring cargo back to the other site. They are on-site for a very brief period, just a few hours. Our client's wholesale customers are national and international with clientele throughout the world. They do not manufacture. They do not fabricate. They do not engage in retail sales. Product comes in on pallets. They break it down, repackage it on pallets and send it out to their ultimate, ultimate client. And the 7,000-square-foot module that's available is ideal for our client's business. Mr. Jacobs authorized me to make those statements. I make them to you with his full authorization, knowing that they are binding on the applicant as we go forward.
Mr. Pape, that occupies, includes both buildings?
The, as we look at the buildings, building number one is the building that is located on the left-hand side. The 7,000-square-foot module that would be where the materials come in and go out is the back of that building. And there's a 3,500-square-foot office element that exists is in very bad condition and that is in the same building in the front. Shortly, Mr. Rudasti's plan will make it very clear. Only, the operation's only in that building.
Okay.
The other operations, we had gone over, there is a person who prints T-shirts who's located in the front building. There's an empty space in the front building and then there are four uses in that building number two. And we had gone over those.
Okay. Board members, any questions?
I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Cantor.
Mr. Pape, the tractor-trails bring the product in from wherever they're purchased from. What kind of trucks take the product back out to the customer?
What product, how does the material leave the site?
Correct.
The trucks that our clients own?
The cargo truck.
The cargo truck and the box truck.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And they take the product to Delaware, if I understood?
Goes back and forth. Sometimes the materials are shipped from Delaware, sometimes materials are shipped from here.
And the business is wholesale-to-wholesale, or is...
Strictly wholesale-to-wholesale.
It's never sold to the public?
On the record, no retail, no fulfillment, no internet sales. They are an existing business wholesale-to-wholesale. They bring the materials in and sell it to, primarily to retail businesses. They're wholesaling to retail businesses who then sell the product to them.
Thank you.
They have no contact with the public.
Yeah, right.
Strictly wholesale.
Doesn't make sense.
Glenn?
I just wanted confirmation with the tractor-trailers, are there any difficulties of them exiting the site? We're concerned a little bit with the radiuses out there at Highway 9.
Jerry Troutman is here, our traffic expert, and we have a tractor-trailer circulation plan. When I call him, he'll present it to you, but the building was, the loading docks were designed by Mr. Zogner, and circulation was incorporated into that design.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the loading dock, it's just the entrance, mainly the exit out of the site onto Route 9.
I'll have Mr. Troutman speak to it, but we also have a circulation plan to present.
Anything else, board members?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Just to, just to recap, because we are at four to five trucks per week, tractor-trailers coming in. Okay. So, a tractor-trailer comes into, if approved, comes into your Howell location, gets broken down into smaller pallets, and then shipped off to Delaware.
Tractor-trailer arrives at this site, it unloads its material into this site. It could be coming from a supplier, it could be coming from Delaware. All the pallets are then in the warehouse building. They are broken down into, for delivery to an end purchaser. So there's so many vitamins, so much nutritional, so much electronics, put on a pallet, wrapped, and then it is placed either the cargo van or the box truck. And occasionally, the tractor-trailer, while it's in the dock, take materials from here back to Delaware, where it's then shipped.
Okay, so it goes to Delaware?
Yes.
And then, I think you said, or there was testimony at some point, that shipments come from Delaware back up to New Jersey. That shipment, what happens to that? The shipment that comes from Delaware to New Jersey, then from New Jersey to what?
It's palletized, and it's, it is then, it's then sold to the retail client. They have their own trucks to do what they can, or they use...
So you do have wholesale-to-retail?
No, they have wholesale, they are wholesale, selling wholesale, to a retail operator who, that's wholesale-to-retail, and then the retail operator sells their product. They do not do retail. So they're wholesale-to-wholesale. They have no contact with a retail customer, other than someone who is selling retail.
But we are, we are dealing with distribution. This is a distribution. This is, this is a whole, this is a warehouse for the purpose of distribution?
It's not an inaccurate statement, no. It's a storage building, storage or warehouse building.
It's a warehouse.
That was the word that I used initially, and...
So it's not, it's not storage? It's a warehouse for distribution purposes?
Your definition has storage and warehouse occurring. It's, it's short-term, materials come in, get repackaged, and then they go back out.
But there's a, there's a large turnover here. It's not, it was first presented to us as storage, storage being, to me, something that isn't an everyday, you know, many hours during the day turnover, back and forth.
This is a, a business operation that runs Monday to Friday, half a day on Friday, not on the weekends, and this activity occurs all day long.
All right, so I guess we'll, there's a traffic, you have a traffic engineer gonna be...
Yes.
Given his, and, and also, I think John, the code-in-force, Aguirre, brought up the situation about taking down the walls, so we're gonna be going through all that?
I can do that. I tried to reach Mr. Aguirre today, I think he's on holiday. But there was, there is a temporary wall that was installed by someone prior to our client's purchasing it. It is a wall that's not attached to the ceiling, it's just standing in the building, and our client, rather than tear the wall down, made an application to Mr. Aguirre to take that wall down. It's just a wall that's, I don't even know why it's there. It doesn't create a room. It's in the warehouse.
But the purpose, I thought the last time, the purpose is, you were gonna be, the office space was going to have access to the warehouse?
Absolutely. It's an existing office element that Mr. Rudasti...
So does that access currently exist?
My clients are telling me that yes, access from the front office to the storage portion of the building currently exists.
I think that's all I have for now.
I have one thing to add to the operations. With growth, do you think this building will be accommodating if there's growth, or what's gonna happen if there is growth down the road?
Mr. Perkins, the commitment of the applicant is what I've just placed before you. If the growth exceeds that, they have two choices: move or come back here to the board to ask for further relief. But they are, we went through this in great detail. They are prepared to be bound to the statements that we've just made to you.
Okay. Thank you.
So I guess my only question, Jen, is, based on what they're talking about with regard to short-term and up to three months, is that, does that still quantify it as a warehouse versus a storage, which is what it was initially presented as?
It's the same, you know, it's the same use group, it'll have the same parking demand, et cetera, and they are here for a use variance. They do have a planner in the audience that's gonna justify the use variance for this, along with multiple principal structures on a single lot, those types of things. So I think that it's, I think the statement of operations that was read is just a little bit more organized description of what is, how this is gonna function. But I agree with Mr. Brillo, like, it's, it's not storage. It's coming in, it's being repackaged, and it's shipping out. That's distribution. But there is no, there was, there's no fabrication, correct, Mr. Pape, and no manufacturing?
Nothing.
So it's really just like, take the pallet, open it, redistribute it, and then send it back out?
To you, Jen, is that storage versus what they're describing?
That's distribution.
Yeah, but I mean, does that fit okay? Does it set well with you?
I mean, it's not permitted no matter what, so they're, that's why they're here. I will say, the use has been there. I don't know that I've ever seen a truck go in and out of there, to be perfectly honest. No offense. I actually didn't know, I mean, I knew the car wash was there, I didn't know this expansive until I went back there when the application came in. So as long as the operations are consistent with what has been happening, I don't see the negative. But I will say that I see Mr. Troutman's in the audience for traffic, and I do think one of the things that is, are gonna come up, and I don't know if you have this at the tip of your fingertips, but be ready, I think it's not just like, when you're talking about 18 tractor-trailers a month, I think we're gonna wanna understand, is that 18 in, 18 out, 18 total? How many in and out on an average per day? I understand that this is Monday through, let's say, lunchtime-ish on Friday, but just to understand the distribution of the vehicles in and out, I think is important to understand whether or not it's impactful. But I could tell you, if it's operating currently, I don't necessarily see this massive impact with 18 trucks in a month, whereas you have these big fulfillment centers, and you're talking 18 trips, like, in the morning, you know? So I think that's important to make that distinction. And they're going directly on and off a state highway, which is kind of where you would want them, as opposed to winding through, you know, your neighborhood streets, so. But I would defer my opinion on that until Mr. Troutman provides his testimony.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
With permission, I'd like to go to, Mr. Zogner, don't leave us, but you're excused, but I'd like to go to Mr. Steve Rudasti, our architect, to present to you the vision of redoing the buildings, and most important, to go over the floor plans.
Has he been previously sworn in?
No, Mr. Chair, not, not...
He's been here a lot.
I know that, but, Andy?
Oh, Steve was sworn in, Mr. Chair, he just didn't testify.
Okay.
So we'll need his credentials.
Did he give, did he give you his professional credentials?
So you're still under oath?
Oh.
If you were sworn in, you're still under oath.
Correct, I believe we were all sworn in together.
So, Mr. Rudasti, we need your credentials on the record, please.
So I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, presented in front of this board before, became, I graduated from New Jersey Institute of Technology in 1992.
We'll accept your credentials, sir.
Your license is in good stead, your New Jersey license is in good standing today.
Yes, it is.
Okay. I know that you have been working for some time with Ms. Beam on the facades, I know that you have been working and doing as you were directed by Ms. Beam. If you could just put, if we could...
What do you need up here?
Yeah, I think...
If I could have sheet...
Let's do a front elevation.
Sheet CS, oh, front elevation?
Yeah.
Sheet CS3, building one conceptual elevation.
Is any of your plans?
Uh, yes, it is.
I'm not Charlie, so you're gonna have to do it anyway.
It's, should be the third sheet in that set.
Are these the plans, please?
Yes, they are. So, back one, which is three.
So if you could just, very briefly, I know, I mean, you've worked with Ms. Beam to satisfy her requirements, just very briefly, what's the goal with the redoing the facade of the building?
So, we're not planning on expanding either of the two buildings. My intention is to significantly improve the aesthetics of the facade with new materials and finishes, as well as to make some interior improvements in the two buildings.
Could you just give a sense of the colors and materials that you'd intend to use?
Uh, yes.
Jen, you went over these?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm sorry. Mr. Rudasti's office is committed to working with me, because some of these walls are still a little blank for our, you know, based upon our design standards, and I don't mean to put words in your mouth, Steve, but we've been working together on this, and we'll continue to work on it, and he's committed to working with my office if the board were to act in the affirmative on the application, so.
Got it.
Perhaps then for efficiency, we could just go to the floor plans, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll announce you.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. So the floor plan, which sheet is the floor plan?
Okay, so then, I would like to go to sheet CS1, which is back two sheets?
Here?
Uh, yes.
And I, I think the most important part of your testimony would be the 7,000-square-foot module that is a warehouse of storage, identified on the plan, and the 3,500-square-foot office that would be associated with it, and identifying the interconnection. Could you do that with this exhibit?
Uh, yes, I could.
Please.
So, so in the corner of the building, of the L, the vertical portion, all the way down to the bottom, when you enter at that portion of the bottom, that's an existing office space of 3,105 square feet on the first floor, and then as you enter through there, that connects to the warehouse, which goes up on the sheet, that's 7,316 square feet of warehouse.
Straight up.
Yeah, if you go straight up on the sheet. So that's all connected. And then, in addition, inside the warehouse, there's some accessory office space. If you see on your left of where the cursor is, it says existing office, 927 square feet. There's some small office space inside the warehouse. That portion, since the warehouse is two stories high, the office is a mezzanine, so it has some more additional office space on top of that. Also, at the top of the page, that rectangle, all the way at the top of the page, which would be the eastern point of the building, there's a mezzanine on top of that. And then, a portion of the existing 3,100 square foot office space, there's an existing office space there. Now, we haven't expanded any of these footprints, these are all existing spaces, existing warehouse, existing office. Next to that, I guess, north of that, to the left, we have a retail space, which is a, I guess it's silk screening T-shirt retail store, they make custom T-shirts. That space is underutilized, so we're dividing it into two smaller retail spaces, and moving the T-shirt to the left, and that would make a 1,528-square-foot retail space between the office and the T-shirt company for a future tenant. And then, of course, all the way to the left, all the way to the north, would be the existing four-bay car wash. If we could go to the next sheet, which is CS2.
First one, right?
So this shows the second floor. As you can see, most of the whole building is one-story, but all the way on the right, the southern portion, there's 1,160 square feet of office space. So that part of the office building is two stories. The building's unusual how it's constructed, it's constructed parts of her steel, parts of her block, parts of her wood, that portion is a wood construction. And then, east of that is the, the open volume of the warehouse space. And you can see the mezzanine that's there, that existing mezzanine where it says existing office, 892 square feet, that actually looks down into the warehouse space. And then, all the way at the top of the page, east of the building, is a small office mezzanine in that top corner. So as you can see, most of the second floor, most of the building has no second floor, just a portion of the warehouse and the office, which is all one tenant.
And what you've just described is the existing conditions of the building, correct?
That is correct.
And the existing, so there's an existing office with a connection to the warehouse portion of the building?
That is correct. We're not changing any of the connections. There might be some changes inside the office, moving some internal walls in the office, but we're not changing the square footage of the existing office.
I think we should also do the same description of building number two.
Okay, so building number two, that is shown on sheet CS4.
This is a collection of interesting uses of, was it, you can describe the pre-existing uses at the site?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
If you would.
So, so, so it looks like the north arrow is actually reversed on this, so it actually should be facing the other direction, the north arrow, but, so if you go to tenant space A, which is the right of the page, that's an existing party rental store called Mr. Happy's. It is 2,677 square feet, and there's a small office area in the front, and then the remainder of the space is open storage space for party rental supplies. So, next to that space is tenant space B, which is called the jam room, and this is a music studio. And this space is pretty much a... And this space is, is pretty much a, it has a footprint of three thousand one hundred sixty square feet, and the second floor is almost as big as the first floor. So inside this building, they built an entire second floor, which is approximately two thousand nine hundred and forty-two square feet. This is made up of recording studios, multiple recording studios on the first floor, the second floor, and that takes up this, this whole space. Next to that is tenant space C, which is called Tire Craft, and this is a auto shop that specializes in tire sales and, you know, putting tires on vehicles. This is a total of twenty-one-hundred-and-ninety-one square feet. It has a small office area in the front for customers to come in, and then it has a larger office area in the back for employees to work, and the central area is all an auto shop where they pull vehicles in through these overhead doors and, and, you know, replace tires. The fourth and final space is tenant space D. This is approximately three thousand and three square feet. This has a, this is vacant currently, but this was a storage use. And when I first went there, there was products being stored in this space, and in the back, there's one small office and an existing bathroom. So it's pretty much one big open space with a, with a, a small office and bathroom at the back of the space.
So you've got car wash, warehouse style building, an office.
Retail.
Retail, and this collection of uses. We would stipulate that there would be no use introduced to any portion of the building, no new use introduced to any portion of the building that was not consistent with the HDA one zone without a return trip to this board.
Jen?
I mean, I'm, I don't really get involved so much in the interior breaking up of the building, other than if it's a warehouse, we can only have a certain percentage of office as part of it for a parking calc, which they comply with. So I don't have any problems, and as I said earlier, Mr. Rodasty is committed to working with my office on the facade, so I don't have any problems with the architectural testimony.
Thank you. Board members?
What is the access? Is it just a doorway going from the?
From the warehouse to the office.
From warehouse to office?
Yes, so there.
And how many doors? Is it one doorway to?
Yes, sheet CS one.
It's right here, right?
Yeah, so there's, um, how do I point it out? So, yeah, so you walk in, you walk in on the west side of the building into the office space, and then there's all the office, and then you just keep going east on the space and it goes into the warehouse. So there's a, there's a door, there's one man door that swings directly from the one space to the other space. There's also an interior stair inside the office that goes up to the second floor office portion. So there's one door that connects the two spaces.
Okay, and along, can you come down a little more? So on, what would that be, the south part, the southernmost end of the building? There's a note there, existing wall to be reconstructed. What's that mean?
So it's an existing two-by-six wood framed construct, the office area is wood framed, that, that two-story portion. It looks like it was actually probably a house at one time years ago, and then it was converted to office space. Part of that wall is, is rotted out, it has water damage, so we want to repair the wall accordingly.
So all this different building material, I mean, do you know, just a curious question, was that, were those all like add-ons? Some of it's wood, some of it's steel, some of it's?
It was built as a whole bunch of different buildings, I mean, the?
All at once, or was it like added on over time?
I think it was built over time because the warehouse is a prefabricated metal building that has columns that become, become the roof rafters. So that's, that's steel and it's prefabricated metal. The two-story office space is wood. The one-story portion of the office space looks like it's wood with a little bit of steel, and it's got block between that and the warehouse. And then the retail portion is got block walls with steel framing. So it's, it's a little hodgepodge of different construction types.
We did an Oprah request and got no less than seven resolutions of approval, some from the zoning board and some from the planning board. I can't figure out why some were going back.
Dating back to when?
About forty-five years, dating back to.
With Tint Falls. Because we didn't have, did we?
No, your zoning board and your planning board from about nineteen eighty-four.
Oh, in eighty-four, okay.
Nineteen eighty, I think was the first one we found. And it just was one after another. The last three, which were two, after two thousand, were all with regard to the monopole and modifications to the monopole. The buildings were approved over time. It's, I'd say nineteen eighty-one to nineteen ninety-nine.
Is there a fire suppression sprinklers?
The building does not have a sprinkler.
And the warehouse part, none of it, right?
Uh, no, it doesn't. But because of the firewalls and the way it's constructed, it's.
And what are the firewalls made of?
Uh, they're made of block, so.
Between each one, even, even where the wood is and the?
Yeah, between the warehouse and the office, there's a.
So it's fire stopped with block?
Correct, it's got two, two stories of block construction there, and then there's another block wall between there and the car wash. So yes, it's, it's, so if, if there's any penetrations on those walls when we do repairs, we'll make sure that we will repair those walls as needed.
To not allow fire travel.
Exactly, so that it meets the building.
It's worth noting, there is no potable, municipal potable water supply or sanitary sewer at the site, and there will be.
It's forthcoming.
It's a commitment of the applicant as part of what we're presenting.
We're good? Okay, Mr. Pabe, traffic?
Traffic, verified, thank you, don't leave. Mr. Jay Troutman is a traffic expert with McDonough and Ray. You were sworn at the last meeting?
Yes.
Credentials, please.
Credentials, please.
I'm a licensed professional engineer, field of specialty is traffic engineering. I've been practicing in the field for thirty-seven years, conducting traffic studies for various types of developments, as well as reviewing traffic studies on behalf of the planning and zoning boards that I represent, and I have appeared in Howell Township on numerous occasions over the years.
And you're licensed in the state of New Jersey as a professional engineer?
Yes.
Where'd you go to school, sir?
Lehigh University.
All right, we'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that we should do the presentation as, as the outline, as originally outlined. I'm gonna ask if you could, so we'll maybe start with A twenty-one, the overall exhibit, and when you need the truck circulation plan, just let us know and we'll put that up. Could we go to A twenty-one?
No, it's really not here, right?
A twenty-one, then A twenty-two will be the.
It's a strategy to distract Jen.
What year did you graduate from? Seventy-five. If you would, I'm gonna ask if you could, in a narrative, if you could just, just take us through the, the site from your perspective as a traffic engineer, commenting on the circulation around the, the property, the improvement to the circulation and the fire chief's participation in that, and if you could also describe how the parking has been amended, larger parking stalls created for large vehicles, the increased number of parking stalls, and conclusion is that factual presentation, I've got a couple of questions about, from you for professional opinions on the improvements that are being offered.
Yes, as you've heard, we have an existing site, we have no plans to expand the traffic intensity, there's no additional square footage being added to the site. You do have unfavorable traffic circulation under existing conditions, and what I mean by that is that you have that perimeter traffic circulation aisle that loops around behind building two, currently terminating in a cul-de-sac. If you look at aerial photography, you can see that cul-de-sac is, has been filled with vehicles at times. So from a traffic standpoint, we find the plan that, that's before you to be superior in that regard, elimination of the cul-de-sac, striping of oversized vehicles and that's, striping of oversized vehicles, parking spaces in that southwest corner to get them into spaces and out of that cul-de-sac area, and then continuing complete circulation in a clockwise fashion around the entire site. So improving onsite traffic circulation and also improving parking supply while not adding any traffic intensity to the site.
There was a request by Chief Brock now that the driveways, all driveways be a minimum of twenty feet. It's my understanding that will be accommodated on all of the driveways.
Yes.
And there was a request by Chief Brock now that we do a fire lane striping, and he provided a detail. I trust that that will be incorporated to the plan also.
Yes.
The, if you could speak to the, the number of parking stalls that exist, the number of parking stalls that are proposed, the variance release that is required, if you could take us through what I'm gonna call something of an anomaly in the ordinance with regard to traffic requirements for car washes.
Yes, the existing parking spaces are fifty-eight, it's being increased to sixty-five, so it's a gain of seven. It's still a variance situation, the requirement is one oh five, there's a difference of forty there. All forty of those extra required spots are generated by the car wash use. The car wash use, according to the code, requires forty parking spaces. However, as a self-serve car wash, you have no employee demand that needs a separate parking space, and the car wash itself provides for the parking demand of the car wash. There's no, there's no designated spaces in that car wash area. The cars use the bays, you might have a car queued behind in a bay, you may have cars at vacuums, which are not being counted as parking spaces, but that car wash demand is accommodated in that large area of pavement and by the bays and the car wash itself.
Mr. Troutman?
Can I just, before you go farther, can I just ask a question about that?
Sure.
So when you say the demand, you mean the actual demand, not the forty parking spaces that are required by ordinance?
Correct.
Right? So like the physical, actual demand of the use can be accommodated in the area that has been identified for queuing?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
A couple of points, if you would. The ordinance has a parking requirement for car washes. It's my understanding the ordinance does not distinguish a tunnel-style car wash from a self-service bay car wash.
That's correct.
So the parking requirement that we're talking about would appear to be more appropriate for a tunnel size, tunnel type car wash.
That's right, where you have employees, et cetera, yes.
And the four bays that we're talking about exist, and the operation that we're talking about exists currently.
Yes, it does.
And it, it exists with seven less parking stalls on, on the site than the applicant is offering.
Yes.
There was a question with regard to the impact on onsite and offsite of eighteen tractor-trailers traveling on the, the site on a monthly basis. To be clear, it is eighteen tractor-trailers. They will come in and they will go out. Eighteen tractor-trailers, eighteen vehicles per month.
So the question that the engineer had was the egress of that tractor-trailer and the turn radius. Are you gonna, are you gonna cross both lanes on Route Nine, or are you going to just use the right lane? Do you have enough turn radius to avoid crossing over and cutting off all the traffic on the way out?
The plan submitted to the board by Mid-Atlantic shows exiting vehicle to go out almost to the center divider to make the right-hand turn and stay within the curb lines.
So that's why we, we need you here, sir. So talk to us.
Yes, so the, the tractor-trailer frequency is extremely low. It would basically be one per weekday, I would say. So if you have eighteen in a month, you've got twenty working days in that month, I would expect on average that you have one entering tractor-trailer a day and then that tractor-trailer exiting. And the way those movements which occur today, the way those movements occur is the traffic signal at West Farms Road provides very generous gaps in the northbound Route Nine traffic flow, so those tractor-trailers would be moving out one a day, moving out into Route Nine on those gaps.
That's not really answering the question. The question is, can it move out of the site without going into the middle lane?
Well, the, 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 the plan that's been submitted shows that it would, it would potentially sweep into both northbound lanes when it's moving on that gap. Now, what I will tell you about those programs that simulate those vehicles is that it's typically a, a rolling vehicle with some speed is what is depicted in that exhibit. If you have a tractor-trailer rolling out of a stop condition on a gap, as I've described, they are usually able to maneuver that in a tighter fashion than what the, what the exhibit would depict. So I would expect that, as is happening today, that those movements can safely be made, that the geometry's adequate, and we did do an investigation, I, what I try to do is, is review in the field, is there any evidence of problems when these tractor-trailers are rolling out of the driveway? And if you inspect the existing curb and the existing pavement of that exit driveway, there's no visible damage or rollover from tractor-trailers not having adequate geometry to, to make that movement. And, and I do think it makes a difference, again, that if you're relying on just getting one of those out per weekday, it's a very low intensity, and again, can be made on those gaps, as I described.
My next question would be, can the curb line be reconfigured so that we don't have this encroachment all the way out to the, you know, the left-hand lane in the northbound traffic?
Certainly curb lines can be reconfigured. I don't see it as necessary in, in this case. Again, I think that provide, the existing curb line provides adequate geometry based on my inspection.
It's a problem. It's a problem. We could change. If we.
Mr. Zogner just shared with me that it is something that he can do, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Troutman to describe what would be required, and the applicant can do it.
So it, it would be an, an internal redesign to get that tractor-trailer better aligned, so it's not as large of a swing when it hits the exit, and that would be accomplished by using some of the land that's available adjacent to the vacuums, and so you would have more positive internal alignment with that driveway. Right now, that driveway pushes north, towards the northerly property line. You could actually make that drive aisle shift south, again, towards the vacuum of the, of the car wash, so that you have a more positive alignment for that vehicle as it moves towards the exit.
And would that result in when a tractor-trailer exits, that they would be able to stay in the, the right-hand lane?
Yes.
I think I see where you're talking about, that little landscape island back there.
That's it.
Because exiting vehicle, you're almost getting them pointed south first, and then you're bringing them back around coming north, where you can just have it so that they're coming out closer to perpendicular to, just to make.
Correct.
I think that'd be appropriate. Can I ask you a question then?
Go ahead. If the circulation is clockwise, the trucks would be coming around from the second building and then coming back north anyway. So that if you take out that little area by the vacuum cleaners, they would be coming, they're traveling north anyway, basically.
Right. Tractor-trails don't need to go around. They're going to go into the dock and then come right back out the same way.
But that's what I'm saying. If we make the tractor-trailers go around, then they would be traveling in that, that right direction. They wouldn't have to make a turn.
I, I think I would prefer the, the realignment and having them come out at the north end where they're, I, I really don't think you, you want them circulating all the way around the site when they have a, an easy exit directly out.
But it can be accommodated to get them going in the right direction, sure.
Mr. Kent, the, the loading docks that would be used by the tractor-trailers, if you could maybe take us through.
No, I understand. I, I get what you're saying. I see where, yeah.
Get into the loading docks. Where, where are they, where are they, where is the tractor-trailer unloading?
They're on the north face of Building 1. So it's the left hand where you see that kind of, uh, mottled area.
Yeah, it's a little of color, okay.
Right below the four trees.
That white area there. So not on the, not at the?
Top.
Not at the top?
Yeah, that's where I was. Okay, that.
So it's not at the top?
Correct.
It's where they are now. They're, they're in very bad condition, but that's where they are now.
All right.
So if a tractor-trailer is there for an hour or two, it's going to be in that loading dock area. So it won't have any, okay. So we're amenable, Phil?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify, can you point where exactly you're going to alter it? Is it going to take out any of the existing trees that are over there or just the proposed?
The landscape.
Well, I don't need the landscape, but yeah, this one's fine. Where, where are you showing to alter?
You have a light.
As you're coming off of the highway on the driveway, the very first thing that you see, there's a tree that would be on your right shoulder. It's that portion of the site that would be modified. The driveway, the whole driveway would shift to the south so that it aligns with the highway more perpendicular than it was on.
So, uh, it's hard to see on this one then. Um, I mean, you can see down the aerial, there is a large area of lawn that comes out. Would it go beyond the sign that's currently there?
This is the section that's taken out.
And I think that part of the property is uneven too.
No, I, I don't see a sign in the area we're talking about.
There's a sign right on the driveway. There is a sign.
There is a sign, yeah.
I think what we're thinking of is the area that's really like, um, poor lawn at the moment where we're proposing landscaping, but not further than that. And then the curb could actually be pulled from the other side south so that we could, get some additional landscaping on the northern side of the driveway.
I, I think the concern is she doesn't want to lose the existing trees, which are nice, right?
And, and same thing on the north side. I don't want you to take those, uh, those shrubs out either.
I think this is something we're going to need to see.
We would not lose those trees.
Okay, it does look like there's plenty of lawn that you wouldn't have to touch that cluster of trees, but yeah, the cluster of trees is behind or in line almost with the sign that's currently there.
Right.
We could make the commitment that we would not remove those trees.
Is, Shari, is there any grading over there, like in terms of the pitch of that? I, cause I thought that the pitch of that property was kind of heading downhill.
Not significant.
Okay. I was just curious.
The whole site goes to a slightly different.
So we would offer that that driveway entrance would be redesigned to the satisfaction of your engineers, but the end result would require that tractor-trailer leaving the site would enter the right-hand lane and not the left-hand.
Correct, Mr. Pape.
That's how, that commitment's made by your applicant to the board.
Okay. All right, any other questions for the traffic?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Can I just get a qualif-, uh, bitter qualification on how we arrived at the parking? I know at the last meeting, we talked about 105 spaces and two were going to EV, so 103 were required. How did we reach that number? What's the formula for that?
For the, what the ordinance requires?
Yes.
It's all in the, you want, Louis, Louis did the calculation, you want him?
It basically, I mean, if I may, just to try to, so basically what they did was they took the square footage of each individual use type and then there's a table on the first, on the cover sheet of the plan set that shows it. So they have warehouse, which is one space for 5,000 square feet. So they have 700, uh, 7,316 square feet.
Right.
That requires two parking spaces. Office is one per 300, so they have 6,400 and change. That's 22 spaces. Retail is one per 150, that's 3,800 square feet, which requires 26 spaces. The car wash, it says 10 stacking spaces per line. There's, uh, four bays, so 10 stacking. I think that's erroneous. It should say 40 spaces required. And then they went through the same exercise in Building 2, um, which comes out to 105. I think the, I think the table, Louis, needs to be revised. Louis? I think your parking table needs to be revised because your allocation of parking for the car wash is not accurate. It should say 40, not 10?
That's correct. Mr. Kedlin pointed that out in his review.
Yes, so that's how you get to the 105. So it should be 40 spaces per the car wash, 10 per bay, and they only have in the table 10, which is why it's a lower number, but that's how they count them.
But Jen, he pointed out that it is a self-serve car wash, so there's no employees and there's no cars that are staying there.
I don't have a problem with the parking. I'm just saying that per ordinance, it requires 40. I think 40 for a parking, for a car wash, even if it had employees, is still a lot of parking spaces that most people don't hang out, right? They put their car in the queue and then they leave.
There's 40 at that Garden State Park.
Yes, there is.
They do auto repair, so definitely.
But that's, there's an error in the table. That's why it's 105 spaces.
Well, and also just looking at square footage, the car wash being at over just 2,000, having to garner 40 spaces.
It's ridiculous. I mean, it's.
Seems.
Yeah, I, I think some of the parking, and I, I think this is something that we're talking about at the planning board when we have these like master plan conversations is that it's time for us to take another look at our parking requirements. Like we're parking for Black Friday all the time and 90% of the time, the half the parking spaces are empty. So, you know, it's definitely something that we're aware of and, and now, especially with the advent of all the online shopping and people aren't going as often to the physical store, it's definitely something that we're looking at.
And 10 parking spaces for a car wash is normally for a tunnel-type car wash, not for a self-serving one. You'll never have 10 people wait in line for a, a self-service, you know, parking area.
Sorry.
All right, so Mr. Pape.
Commitment's made to the board that we make that revision to the plan.
Okay.
I have nothing further of Mr. Troutman. He's available to you.
All right, where's the planner?
You ready for, are, are we ready for the planner, Mr. Chair?
I think we are.
She's entering now.
Okay.
Don't sit down.
Thank you.
How are you? I think I'm sworn from last time.
You were.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, let's do it. Let's hear it.
Okay. So we are here, obviously, seeking, the reason this board has jurisdiction, even though this is a very interesting application, because all existing uses are on-site, all existing square footage is on-site. This is an application where we are asking you to not consider any new uses and not consider any additional square footage on the property. But the reason we need a D1 variance is because we have multiple uses on the property and the warehousing use is not a permitted use in the zone. So when I look at the definition of warehousing in Howell, it talks about those facilities involved and it reads, this is right from the definition section of your ordinance, "Those facilities involved in short-to-long term, long-term storage of bulk materials and products. Items are brought in and distributed in bulk with little to no material repackaging, repurposing, or breakup. Warehousing shall not include fulfillment warehouse centers." So I think we're very much in line with, um, with what exists on the site and with the township contemplates as a warehouse. With that being said, though, it's not a permitted use in the HD1 zone. So while it exists on the site today, um, it's not a permitted use, nor are we allowed to have the multiple permitted uses. So that requires the D1 variance. Ms. Beam also asked us to acknowledge the fact that we do have multiple conditional uses on here, right? We know that the car wash is a conditional use. The only conditional use requirement is that it fronts on Route 9 or I think 33. So we certainly comply with that. We do comply with the requirements for the auto repair or really tire craft, which is the tire store. So we do comply with that. The conditional use requirements for the cell tower, we do violate some of those, but that relief was granted previously and we have the resolutions for that. Mr. Pape, um, had those and provided those. So that's the extent of the D-variance relief, um, that we need. So we do need to demonstrate to the board that the particular suitability is met. The site exists, it's there today, and it's operational and functional. So I think the board can certainly take notice of the fact that the site is developed as it is, is particularly suitable for this type of use. As far as the special reasons, statutorily, we would have to advance one or more purposes in the municipal land use law to meet our positive criteria proofs. I think that there are four. I think in this particular case that we can say, and this is a non-inherently beneficial use, but I do think we can rely on criteria A here, promoting the general welfare. And we're going to get a little bit more into that when I talk about the negative criteria, but I can tell the board that I've been keeping track of 10 specific betterments associated with this project and that's why I think promoting the general welfare is appropriate here. Criteria G talks about sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses. Um, you know, the law and share of the, the use program is permitted as of right here and it's an existing use. I also think criteria M, which talks about efficient use of the land. The applicant has made this a much, uh, much more efficient layout and a much, uh, superior site than it exists today and as well as criteria I. If you had an opportunity to visit the subject property, which I did a few times, I was actually in it today to go inside and see, you know, see that one wall that was coming down, which in my estimation, I, I could probably kick it down if I was mad enough. That didn't even go to the top of the ceiling. I'm not sure how that, that came to be there, but I don't think that that's going to be a substantial change to the interior of that building. So those are the four purposes of municipal land use law that I think are advanced by this application. When you're dealing with any variance, you have an obligation to look at the negative criteria. And the negative criteria is the impact on the public good and the impact on the zone plan. So as I was keeping track through our hearings, the 10 betterments that I see associated with this application are the circulation, right? If you, again, if you went out to the site, you know that you sort of terminate there by, um, Mr. Happy Tent Rentals, you can't get around. So the circulation is substantially improved. There is no stormwater management on the site, so we're, we're bringing that and we're controlling that. That's important. While we're not complying with the parking, we are adding additional parking spaces and we are adding electronic vehicle charging spaces. So that's a benefit. The building, let's face it, to lack curb appeal is about the nicest way you could say the condition of the existing structures. And I understand we're not there yet with Ms. Beam, but we are working, working towards that as she and Mr. Radasti have done on many occasions. The parking lot is, is also very, very difficult to drive through. It's got potholes. It's just not in a great repair, so we're improving that. We are delineating the environmental sensitive areas, which doesn't exist today, so now we have a benchmark, you know, as the board goes forward. And if the site comes before you again, you have that snapshot in time. We're improving the lighting, right? We're adding LED lights. We're adding a formal landscaping plan. And we're adding the sidewalk and we're bringing, uh, sewer and water utilities to the property. So, and the resurfacing in the parking lot, that was 10. So when you look at the negative criteria, right, and you have to balance, that's what we do then. The next step is we balance and do the benefits of the application outweigh any detriment, right? It doesn't say, um, planning board or zoning board, hold the applicant to a standard of proof where there's no detriment, just that the benefits of the grant of the variance outweigh any detriment. And here, um, and that will have no substantial detriment to the public good or to the zone plan. So here, I think you really only have, uh, the betterments associated with this application. I think this is probably a textbook negative criteria case. I think the board can certainly be very comfortable that the applicant meets its burden of proof with regard to the positive and negative criteria. And as far as the master plan, the master plan, which was reexamined last year in Howell in 2023, talks specifically about encouraging redevelopment of existing commercial areas. So I think that this is an existing commercial area, while all of the uses aren't exactly aligned with what's permissible in the HD1, they are existing on the site and substantially aligned with the HD1. And those 10 betterments, um, certainly, um, outweigh any detriment, in my opinion.
I'd like you to think of an 11th betterment. Few minutes before you came up here, we made a commitment to redesign that driveway so that there'll be a more perpendicular connection to the highway. So all vehicles, tractor-trailer and other vehicles, will be entering the highway on a, on a perpendicular. Can you add that to your betterment and make it number 11?
Sure, and then we can bring H in as positive criteria as well, promoting the free flow of traffic, because that's definitely a betterment as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Kavon. Jen?
So you need a D-variance for the warehouse in and of itself and you would need a D-variance for the multiple principal buildings and uses on a single lot. Is the testimony that you've provided with respect to the positive and negative criteria applicable to both or is there a separate testimony for the multiple principal uses?
No, it would be essentially the same testimony because those uses are existing. I think when you look at the fact that we're not introducing another, we're not asking you to consider this application and consider, hey, in addition to what's existing on the site today, we would like you to also consider one more use here. So, um, it is all holistic testimony together to address both the D1 for the non-permissible use as well as the D1 for the multiple uses.
So I, I don't take exception to, I mean, the free flow of traffic is a bit much for me, but, you know, cause yeah, you're, you're preventing a tractor-trailer from creating a dangerous situation. I don't know that free flow of traffic is a goal of zoning that we're advancing. I mean, we're preventing a safety problem. But I do agree with the other four goals of zoning that were put forth. I do, um, agree with the betterments, as we call them. I, I just want to ask a couple of questions. So like to your knowledge, have there been issues with tract, conflicts between passenger vehicles coming to the site for the, the small retail space and/or the car wash conflicting with any vehicles and tractor-trailers going towards the back to the distribution area?
Not to my knowledge. And now that we have circulation around the entirety of the building, as was requested by the fire official, I think if there were conflicts on site, which I'm not aware that there were, um, the opportunity for those will be minimized by this application.
So I, that being said, I, I don't take exception. I mean, I, I think everyone here is well aware of the condition of that area and that, you know, improving the facades and the, the parking lot and the drive aisles and realigning that, um, driveway to create a safer condition on the highway, I think are all very strong positive, um, items that absent this application, I mean, the site could continue to operate as is. So absent the application coming forth to, to spiff up the site, I don't, you know, I think it would stay in the tired condition that it is currently. So, you know, and, and as I said, you know, I, I've been, I used to work across the street, basically, and Shari works across the street now. And, you know, it's not a high-traffic center. You don't see a lot of queuing, cars waiting to get out of that driveway. You also don't see a lot of traffic stopped on Route 9 with cars trying to get into the driveway. So I think based upon the testimony provided, the limited amount of tractor-trailer activity, if we're talking about, you know, one per weekday, I think it's pretty minimal. So I don't take exception to the testimony that was put forth.
Thank you, Jen. Board members?
Not for, um, the planner. There's just another question.
Ask the, ask the question.
The 18 trucks, is, is that a floor number? I mean, we, we've heard testimony that obviously the applicant wants to expand and grow his business, not structurally, but it's, you know, as far as how much product he's going to be. be.
That's not the testimony. The testimony was that if he grows, he'll either be back here asking for relief or he'll move.
So my question was, is 18 trucks a floor?
It's a ceiling.
That's a ceiling numbers?
Yeah. It's the commitment.
It's, they basically, Mr. Paper read into the record, 18 or less tractor-trailers per month. So that's a ceiling.
And we're prepared to have that memorialized.
With public?
Let's go to public.
Motion open to public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eileen?
The board will now be open to the public. If you have any comment, please come up and state your name and your address.
Please. Motion to close? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're closing the public, Eileen.
The board will now be closed to the public.
Mr. Paper?
Very briefly, Mr. Chair, I think that the testimony of all the experts has made quite clear that your applicant has purchased a property that is tired, that your applicant is not expanding the buildings, but the applicant is making improvements throughout the site. There are aesthetic improvements, environmental improvements, and safety improvements. We would ask that the board, I know that they heard the testimony, I would ask that the board consider the application presented to you favorably.
Mr. Paper? My question to you before I ask the pleasure of the board, was this the former site of the Window Man that used?
Our clients do not believe that it was.
Okay.
Window Man?
Yeah.
All kinds of signs, which we can't discern, all over the building, but none that say Window Man.
No, I just remember always driving past it.
It's the next building.
It's the next building. Oh, it's the next building. Okay, all right. Okay, all right. So what's the pleasure of the board here? Mr. Cantor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the use variance and preliminary and final major site plan requested by the applicant.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to piggyback on Mr. Cantor there and just bring up a couple of items. The sidewalk for Route 9, just to reiterate, we also talked about a third trash enclosure last time. I just want to make sure that's still in the project. Happy to hear about the resurfacing of the parking lot. That's a great commitment. And to adjust the exit for the trucks. With all that, I'd like to second Mr. Cantor's motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Verilla.
No.
Mr. Cantor?
Give me like two seconds just to comment on this. You know, we talk in Howell, New Jersey about the warehousing, and we also talk about the dilapidated buildings and the abandoned buildings on Route 9. I think as Ms. Cuffin stated, we have to measure the negative criteria against the positives in this case. There certainly are negatives with the truck traffic. But I feel absent any public comment on this property, you know, we're getting a nicer property on Route 9, and it'll, you know, we're going to have to put up with a little bit of truck traffic. And they've done everything they can to alleviate the negative impact of the trucks, so I vote yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
I'm a big proponent of Route 9 and keeping the traffic out of our residential areas. At the last meeting, I didn't think this was going to, I was going to stir my views towards this application. There are concerns about the traffic, but it is a state highway. There is more positive criteria. The planner and both planners kind of put me over the top, so I'm going to vote yes as well.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
I think when you look at what has been discussed today, it's a little bit different than what we talked about at the last meeting. Certainly, there's a stronger commitment to move forward in all the right directions on this. And based on the preponderance of all the facts, I'm going to vote yes.
And Ms. Scottson?
So I'm going to concur with what both Mr. Cantor and Mr. Merton said. However, I am still very concerned about the use in that warehouse. I'm also concerned that I'm not, I don't think it was clear enough about any traffic studies with regard to that intersection where, you know, whether that the accidents and some of the issues that have taken place in that intersection have been satisfied. The truck traffic concerns me greatly, even if it's 18. That being said, I also want to see Route 9, and based on what they've shared, I concur with that. So I'm going to say yes for only that reason.
Application is approved.
Here's where I usually say, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, but I'll wait for Mr. Chairman to be seated. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, on behalf of the applicant, the applicant professionals in person, I thank you for the time spent on the application and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Paper. We're going to continue on? Okay. Applications before the board.
My clock in the back, sir. Is that right?
Next application is BA 24-01, Howell Medical Investors LLC. This is a use variance and preliminary and final major site plan with bulk variances. Description: Application of Howell Medical Investors as applicant and owner seeking approval to construct a 65,550 square foot three-story medical office building with associated site improvements within the HD1 zone. The improvements will include a 398-space parking lot, driveway, sight lighting, landscaping, building signage, a trash refuse enclosure, retaining walls, above-ground infiltration basins, and an underground stormwater management basin on Block 143, Lot 23.01, U.S. Highway 9 North. This application was scheduled for September 23, 2024, and rescheduled to November 2024. The expiration date is tonight, November 4, 2024. Sir, who do we have in front of us?
Good evening. My name is Jan Waters. I'm a partner in the firm of Bathgate, Wagoner, Wolf, and Lakewood. I represent the applicant, Howell Medical Investors. The property subject of this application consists of approximately 13 acres and is located along Route 9 north, somewhat north of Casino Drive, and is in the HD Highway, HD1 Highway Development Zone, and the property is currently undeveloped. By way of brief history of the site, in 2008, the planning board granted final site plan approval to a prior owner for the construction of a 62,000-square-foot furniture store that was never built, and the approval was granted, was abandoned. In 2019, the owner came back for a, was granted preliminary site plan approval and variance relief and Woodlands Management approval to construct a mixed-use shopping center plaza for stores and restaurants. The shopping plaza never received final approval, and the preliminary approval has been abandoned. The property is now owned by a new owner, the applicant in this case, and is proceeding with this application. The application, the applicant is the New Jersey arm of Randina Healthcare Real Estate, who is a recognized developer of healthcare facilities throughout the country. The applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval with variances and design waivers to develop the property in a joint venture with RWJ Barnabas Healthcare with a new three-story, 65,550-square-foot medical facility, which will provide urgent care, primary care, specialty care with a focus on orthopedic services, diagnostic imaging, and ambulatory surgery center. The medical facility is a permitted use in the HD1 zone. However, the applicant will be seeking the following variances. Applicant will need a D-variance relief from 55D76, to permit a structure which is greater than, in height, more than 10% or 10-foot of the maximum height permitted in the HD1 zone. The professionals will explain in further detail the necessity for that requested D-variance. In addition, the applicant is also seeking bulk C variances. There are paving areas encroaching in buffer areas, a heated service meter enclosure located in the front yard, fence exceeds eight foot, a monument sign is 10-foot in the right-of-way. And in addition, the applicant will be seeking design waivers for light intensity, no-loading dock, a less-than-required parking, and a flat roof. And with that, I'd like to call my first witness. May I use the table?
You may use the table, Mr. Lord.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Who do we have here?
My first witness I'd like to call is Eric Carney, who is President and Chief Executive Officer of Monmouth Medical Center, who will be testifying on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, can we have him sworn in, please?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you go?
I do.
Please state your name to the record and spell your last.
Eric Carney, C-A-R-N-U-I.
The witness is sworn in, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Carney?
Thank you.
Sir, I'd like to ask Mr. Carney a question or two.
Of course.
So what you're proposing here is a full-fledged medical facility that, with oxygen, backup generator, the whole thing, as an emergency urgent care type center or just a day operation?
We're proposing as an outpatient center that will function Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It would be an urgent care center, but it's very typical of the urgent care centers you see in most strip malls throughout Monmouth County.
Okay, so.
So not an emergency room.
It doesn't have an associated emergency room with it?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Just trying to understand the concept.
Mr. Chairman, that will be part of Mr. Carney's testimony as I go through, so.
Yes, just trying to get an idea.
That's fine.
Okay. Quick, go ahead. And this is an adjunct of Monmouth Medical Center? Which one is that in Monmouth County?
So I'm currently the CEO of Monmouth Medical Center in Long Branch and also Monmouth Medical Center in Southern Campus in Lakewood.
Okay, gotcha.
And we're part of the RWJ Barnabas Health System.
You are, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lord?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Carney, will you please state your position again with Monmouth Medical Center?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm currently the President and CEO of Monmouth Medical Center in Long Branch and Monmouth Medical Center Southern Campus in Lakewood.
Will you describe for the board the relationship between RWJ Barnabas Healthcare and the applicant?
So we are, it's essentially a joint venture between RWJ Barnabas Health and Randina Healthcare Real Estate, has, as was mentioned, is a national developer. It's also our longtime partner in RWJ Barnabas Health, helps us develop these outpatient centers. So recently, we've opened a center with Randina at the Monmouth Mall. It's called the Animal Vocal Family Care and Wellness Center. We've opened similar outpatient centers in Toms River, and we're currently working on one in Old Bridge as well.
So in, to further respond to the chairman's question, could you in more detail describe the medical facility which is subject of this application?
Sure. It'll be a three-story building, approximately 65,000 square feet. It'll have, the services included will be urgent care. So this is not emergency-level care, but for individuals who need to be seen and can't get an appointment with their primary care physician, they can come to the urgent care center to be seen. We'll also have primary care, so internal medicine physicians there. We'll have a number of specialists, outpatient specialists, primarily focused on orthopedics, but there'll be other specialists in the building as well. There'll be a diagnostic imaging center, so essentially an outpatient radiology center as well as an outpatient surgery center.
How large would that facility be?
So they'll all be included within the facility. Square footage, I don't have the square footages for each specific unit yet, but.
But it's significant, I would understand, right?
It'll be a significant portion of the building. Those typically are larger, the footprint of those particular.
Those machines?
Services are larger, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Carney, how many tenants or practices do you anticipate in the facility?
We anticipate about five to seven in total. The majority of will be very closely aligned with RWJ Barnabas Health, but there is the potential to have a private physician group or two in the center, depending on ultimately how the services shape out.
So you anticipate somewhere around five to seven separate practices?
In total.
In total. And what is the number of employees you anticipate at the facility?
So we anticipate 120 employees at maximum when the center is operational.
And we describe.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
And what is that based on if you don't have any tenants currently? Like, where are you getting the 120 from?
So we're modeling after what we anticipated from a surgery center and a diagnostic imaging center. We do have partners that we work with in those, for those areas, who have given us estimates based on what we anticipate. And then also, we've looked at the footprint and the typical medical practice and just using our benchmarks of what we know for those sites.
Okay.
So you will be performing outpatient surgery?
We will be an outpatient surgery center. That's our intention.
Okay.
Mr. Carter, what are the anticipated hours of operation?
So we anticipate 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. 6:00 a.m. typically, we don't anticipate the entire facility operational during those hours, but typically with surgery centers, they tend to start earlier in the day to accept patients, so that'll be the earliest program that opens up. And the urgent care will typically run later, because that's when people tend to need those services.
I know this question will come up probably by the boards, but since this is an ambulatory care center, what do you anticipate the potential ambulance traffic to be?
So we do have experience with ambulatory centers in different communities. There is always the risk that a patient who is either undergoing a procedure or seeing a physician potentially would have an issue where we need to call 911. It would be a 911 facility. It happens very infrequently, but there is always the potential. The biggest concern is always around ambulatory surgery. What we typically do is there's a classification, it's called an ASA classification. It's the American Association of Anesthesiologists, and they risk stratify individuals based on the potential for having an anticipated outcome in surgery. And so this surgery center will operate on ASA 1 and 2 class patients only, which would be the lowest possible class. Anything higher than 2 typically would go to a hospital where you would anticipate patients having a potential negative outcome during surgery.
Will there be a helicopter pad on top of the roof?
There will not.
Okay.
It's not that kind of facility.
No, it's not. And the incidence of needing the 911 service is very, very rare in these types of facilities.
Ms. Carney, would you please describe for the board what you believe to be the benefits that this medical facility will bring to the community?
From my perspective, it's access. What's changed in healthcare delivery over the last five to seven years is moving away from destination centers where communities have to come to a hospital to get all the services that they need. Healthcare providers have been working and putting the services that our communities need into the community directly. It does two things. One, it makes, it eliminates a barrier from an experience standpoint for any of you who have come to a hospital. It's not usually a very comfortable of experience, often difficult to navigate, often very challenging. The second piece of it is it's also a distance that people have to drive from their home community to go get care. And the third piece is about cost. Quite frankly, it is much less expensive to provide care in these settings than it is to provide them in an acute care hospital. So the ambulatory centers like this allow us to offer healthcare to our community at a much lower cost.
Okay.
Thank you. I have no further questions of Mr. Carney unless the board has some questions.
Well, you say that you're going to, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. If you're required, have a patient that requires to be there later, if you're, if radiology is backed up and you want to do imaging until 10:00 p.m., is there an option to do that?
We don't anticipate, typically outpatient imaging centers do not operate that way. We don't anticipate typically outpatient imaging centers do not operate that way. It's a very, very regimented schedule, so we would anticipate running this center exactly the same way. With surgery, there's always the risk that a patient comes out of surgery and requires a longer recovery. When these incidents do happen at freestanding surgery centers, it's not uncommon, it'll be a requirement to have a transfer agreement in place for the surgery center, that that patient would then have to be brought via ambulance from the center to a hospital for follow-up care.
So, the patient would not be there overnight?
No.
Okay. Any questions?
Just a quick one.
Okay.
What would the maximum number of patients be on-site in any given time? You mentioned a hundred and twenty employees.
I'm not, I don't have a definitive answer on the number of patients at any given time.
Okay. With the parking lot, does the parking lot typically get full at these centers?
I think we'll have an expert testifying on parking.
We will.
That'll give, our traffic expert will better explain the traffic flow and the parking requirements, but to comment on, a comment that was made on a prior application where your parking requirements oftentimes anticipate Black Friday every day, no, with this facility, even at the size, the required parking of four hundred ninety-eight spaces is just not, or four hundred some odd spaces is not, you would never hit that, ever.
Thank you.
Would all the, so urgent care, primary care, outpatient specialty care, radiology, is it all six AM to eight PM?
No, those typical medical office physician practices would traditionally open at usually a more of an eight AM to four PM timeline. The surgery center would typically run from a six AM to six PM. Imaging centers could be anywhere in that typically more of a nine to five type of timeline.
All right, so it's the outpatient surgery that's six AM to eight PM?
And I would say the urgent care center is another center would typically be open up, yeah. Urgent cares have very low traffic at not nine AM, but they tend to ramp up afternoon. So, the timeline for that would be more extended in season.
Okay, thank you.
And this is Monday through Friday? No Saturday hours?
Correct. I don't think, we do not anticipate weekend hours.
So, let's say a pediatrician wants to have an office space in there. My experience, pediatricians are open on a Saturday. So, the reason I'm asking you this is that you're saying six to eight, Monday through Friday, that will wind up in a resolution. If there are situations where maybe an urgent care or a pediatrician's office or something like that in this facility that would utilize Saturday hours, perhaps asking for Saturday hours while you're here would be a better scenario than having to come back to get the hours amended later, right?
I appreciate the cross-check, Ms. Beams. I would, for this facility, the flexibility, because it's a healthcare facility, to operate seven days a week is very appropriate. I appreciate the cross-check.
Seven days a week, yes.
I mean, I, I, I'm still again on nine, but I mean...
So, Mike, okay, it's good. So, my question would be then, on radiology, you would do nuclear medicine as well?
So, we do not anticipate doing outpatient nuclear medicine testing in the center. It would be traditional MRI, CT, CAT scan, diagnostic radiology, as well as ultrasound.
Okay. But PET scans, nuclear PET scans?
We do not have a plan for PET scan episode.
Got it. Questions? Nope?
No.
Okay. Mr. Lord?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Carney.
My next witness I'd like to call our professional engineer, Christian Roche with Langin Engineering and Environmental Sciences Services.
Andy?
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you go?
I do.
State your name for the record, spell your last.
Sure, it's Christian Roche, R-O-C-H-E, with Langin Engineering, L-A-N-G-I-N.
Mr. Roche, would you please state your qualifications?
Sure, I have bachelor's degrees in civil engineering and business from Lehigh University as well as a master's degree in civil engineering from North Carolina State. Most appropriately for this board, though, I have a elementary school degree from Gribling Elementary as well as a middle school degree.
Are you licensed in the state of New Jersey, sir?
I am.
Okay. And it's current?
It is current, and I've been practicing land development for about twenty years now.
Okay, so we accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Roche, did you or others under your direction prepare all the engineering plans and exhibits presented to the board in this application?
We did.
Would you please describe the proposed medical facility to the board based on the plans you submitted?
Sure. And Eileen, if you don't mind going to the exhibits, I think it was A twenty-four we ended up with?
Yes.
Ms. Beams controlling that tonight.
What are we doing?
Eight twenty-four.
That's it, emerged exhibits. Thank you. So, the projects that we were talking about this evening, it's identified as block one forty-three, block twenty-three point oh-one on the township tax map. It's approximately thirteen point one acres and is generally bound by Route Nine to the west, the Manasquan River to the south, Small Branch, which is a tributary to the Manasquan River to the east, and the villages to the north. One thing you'll notice as you look at the aerial is that about fifty percent of the site is occupied by wooded areas presently, and the remaining fifty percent of the site was cleared previously based on the aforementioned previous approval. Our project this evening is generally limited to the area of the site that was previously cleared by the previous developer. Just two other things I'll note with the existing conditions, right now, there is a gravel driveway, which is a right-in, right-out off of Route Nine, and then the entirety of the site is within the HD one highway development zone. And Ms. Beams, if you don't mind going down, one PDF. Perfect. Thank you. The next exhibit is just a colored or rendered version of your overall site plan that was submitted as part of our site plan application package. What the applicant is proposing construct on the property is a three-story medical office building with a ground floor footprint of approximately twenty-one thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet, which provides a total of sixty-five thousand five-hundred-and-fifty gross square feet of medical office space. We've located the building in the proposed southern area of the site, the vast majority of the proposed parking to the north. Access to the project is going to be provided by a right-in, right-out driveway off of Route Nine north. And I'll note that we just recently obtained our New Jersey Department of Transportation major access permit for the project as well as the approval of this access point with that. A very popular topic in Howell, we are doing sidewalks along Route Nine. That was part of the DOT approval. Those sidewalks will provide access from the Route Nine frontage up into the site where we have a pedestrian sidewalk surrounding the building as well as some pedestrian sidewalks within the parking area. From an overall parking perspective, the township ordinance requires one parking stall for a hundred and fifty square feet of medical office space. If you do the math on the sixty-five thousand five-hundred-and-fifty square feet and the one stall for one fifty, we have a parking requirement of four hundred and thirty-seven parking stalls. Once we take into account our EV parking credit of sixteen EV stalls, that parking requirement is reduced to four hundred and twenty-one stalls, whereas we're proposing three hundred and ninety-eight parking stalls. So, we are requesting a waiver on the parking requirement, and our traffic engineer is going to provide...
A variance?
A waiver, waiver within...
Oh, is it twenty percent?
Yeah, that's what... So, we're agreed, it's a waiver, okay.
And our traffic engineer will provide some justification along with our planner to that later on this evening. From an ADA parking perspective, we're proposing nine ADA stalls, which meets the ADA parking requirements along the building frontage. And from a geometric perspective with the parking, we're fully complying with the ordinance relative to the stall width and depth, which is a nine-foot wide stall, nineteen feet deep, twenty-five-foot wide drive aisles within the parking area, and then a thirty-foot wide drive aisle for emergency vehicles on those drive aisles immediately adjacent to the building perimeter.
And access for the assisted van, medical vans that are showing up and dropping off and...
That's correct. We do have the ADA van stalls. There's two of those which comply with the requirements for ADA parking. From a loading and trash perspective, we anticipate that trash operations will be handled at the southeastern corner of the building. That's the rear portion or the area furthest away from Route Nine. That area is going to be surrounded by a masonry enclosure, which will be eight foot high. I had to give some comments from the planner regarding that enclosure. We have no objection to complying with those aforementioned comments. From a loading perspective, we anticipate the vast majority of deliveries are FedEx-type deliveries. The site's been designed to handle small-size box trucks, but we anticipate those deliveries would be somewhat infrequent, and when we do have those deliveries, we anticipate that they would be done in off-peak hours, so for example, early morning or later in the day. As a result of that, we're requesting a waiver to not have a dedicated loading zone. We anticipate the drive aisle to the east of the building, again, that's the rear side of the building, would be utilized temporarily store the box truck for short duration while that unloading would take place. Stormwater management, the stormwater management design has been done in accordance with both the township and the state requirements, we're meeting the requirements for water quality, water quantity, and groundwater recharge through the proposed construction of a bioretention basin along the frontage of Route Nine, an infiltration basin at the rear of the site, and then below-grade infiltration basin beneath a small portion of the parking lot area. That stormwater management design has already been approved by the New Jersey Department of Fire and Water Protection. We received our flood hazard area permits and wetland permits about three to four weeks ago, which approved the stormwater management design. Mr. Yorkin did have some minor comments on the stormwater, and I'll put on the record, I have no objection to complying with his comments. They were highly technical in nature, and I will not bore you with them for forty-five minutes here this evening unless anyone wants to take a deeper dive into those. Site utilities are going to be provided off of Route Nine. JCPN L is going to be providing the electric service. NJ Natural Gas will provide gas. And then, this is one of the rare areas of the township where New Jersey American Water provides both water and sewer. Sewer's going to be connected with a lateral directly out to Route Nine, and then we are proposing a water main extension on the order of about fourteen hundred feet to connect to the nearest New Jersey American Water Line, which is just to the north of Woolies Fish Market. And with that, we will be proposing a hot box in the, or I should say, adjacent to the main access point. For those who don't know what a hot box is, if you drive down Route Nine, the closest one I could find was in the U-Haul facility. It's a box that serves as a meter enclosure for New Jersey American Water's equipment. Unfortunately, it's a requirement, and it's a requirement that we have to place the hot box as close as we can to our fronting property line, and as a result of that, we are requesting a variance to allow for the accessory structure within the front yard setback. It's the small-shaped rectangle, I think you guys can see it up there. We are proposing some evergreen screening to try and block it from the public roadway. It's not the most attractive element, but it's a water company requirement. From a landscape, oh, there you go. Thank you. From a landscaping perspective, we are proposing a hundred and thirty new trees with a minimal removal of around nineteen trees. The removal of the nineteen trees, I mentioned earlier that the vast, vast majority of our proposed development was within the previously cleared footprint. The removal of the nineteen trees is really to allow for a new stormwater outfall to the Manasquan River. And I'll go over quickly some of the landscape comments received, but the main takeaway is we have no objection to complying with the landscape comment letter. The primary buffer in the northern portion of the site between the villages and our project, we had shown a series of evergreens and a series of ornamental trees. There was a comment in the planning and the landscape letter about potentially considering a berm and a fence to meet township requirements. We have no objection to doing that here this evening, so we're going to add the berm, we're going to add the fence to be fully compliant in that regard. The only deviation we're asking for on the landscaping is a waiver to allow for a contribution to the tree fund rather than doing all of the offset plantings on-site. And it's a little bit of a unique situation. I'll try and explain it the best I can, but the previous developer had a tree clearing fee based on putting back trees on-site, and they never met that obligation. So, if you started from scratch with just our application, we would have enough trees to offset for our nineteen trees coming out, but when you total in what the previous developer did not plant, we have a little bit of a deficit, and we'll work that out with the previous guy, but from the township's perspective, we will make you whole and pay the remaining tree clearing fees. So, I'll move on to site lighting unless there's any questions on that. We are proposing nineteen new LED fixtures. Those will be three thousand Kelvin that will be mounted at a height of twenty-four feet. Probably most important, we're not proposing any spillover from those light fixtures onto adjacent properties, and we're only requesting one waiver on the lighting, which deals with the maximum average lighting level across the site. We're meeting all the minimum level requirements. The ordinance requires a maximum average of zero-point-five-foot candles, whereas we have a average of one-point-one in our parking areas. However, the applicant is willing to put in timers as requested by the board, so we don't have any spillover of those lights during late, late-night hours. We would just request that we're able to light areas for security purposes. And then, I'll wrap up just by talking about the site signage on the opposite side of...
Can you speak up because we can barely hear you? So, I can guarantee you all the way in the back can't hear anything. What was the lighting hours?
The commentary is we would work with the professionals for lighting hours as far as dimming. From a site safety perspective, it's going to be something we'd want on full-time, but as you get further back into the parking lot, less utilized areas, we can work out hours with the professionals. For the site signage, I'll let the architect talk about the signage on the building, but we are proposing a monument sign to the north of the proposed access drive. That monument sign meets all dimension requirements, but we are asking for a variance relative to the setback of the sign, whereas the township requires a twenty-foot setback, we're proposing a ten-foot setback. And the rationale for that is really just on how far our property line is setback from the Route Nine curb line. The property line is about forty-three feet back, so our sign would be fifty-three feet back, which is why we're requesting a deviation in that requirement.
So, comparatively, other sites along Route Nine have the same scenario, correct? Yes, they do.
Yes.
And yet, they manage to comply with the setback for the signage. So, I'm not, like, I don't necessarily think we should grant that relief just because, like, I think that they can comply, and absent some legitimate rationale, like the sign can't be seen, that's one thing, but the fact that you have a large right-of-way, that's a situation that we deal with up and down Route Nine almost every property. So, I, you know, to me, it should be setback to twenty feet. That's a safety issue.
It's not the hill I'm going to die on. We'll set it back twenty feet.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
So, Jan, do you want me to go over the variances, or do you want Christine when she comes up here to...
I mean, I think that the variances that I have that need to be addressed is the height of the building, which I think, Mr. Waters, you indicated in your opening.
Yes.
The buffer relief, which, you know, we're going to, we're going to have to go through. There's a number of them related to the buffers. And then I have fences and walls. And the issue is that the fences and wall section of our ordinance are treated exactly the same. It's the same section, so you have a retaining wall of nine feet along the infiltration basin, and you need relief for that. It should not exceed six feet. So, I would suggest that maybe you go through the retaining wall and the need for the retaining wall, because I'm sure that the reason that it's the height that it is is that you need it for whatever grading. But I think the balance of them, you can leave for Christine to do.
Okay, so I'll touch on the need for relief for retaining wall. At the very top of your screen, where we have a sand layer, that's an infiltration basin, and the majority of that wall is less than eight feet in height, but we have about a forty-foot stretch which exceeds eight feet. The reason we have that retaining wall in the first place is because we're trying to minimize any type of impact on the existing trees within that area, and it's also a riparian zone for the tributary. That's the purpose of the wall. It's not highly visible, and that's why we have nine feet.
Okay.
Chris, how much did you say of that wall was, you know, the above the eight-foot limit?
There was a forty-foot stretch.
Forty-foot, okay. Any other further questions of Mr. Roche?
Any other further questions of Mr. Roche?
Board members?
Yeah.
We're good, Mr. Lord.
Thank you.
Lab work is going to be done on-site, or is that going to be, go off-site and then reported?
I can call Mr. Carney back up.
Mr. Carney, yeah, I'll just.
Lab work will be done off-site.
It'll be off-site?
You know, primarily. There are some practices that have small facilities like LabCorp, where they'll have one or two people, but the majority probably will be sent off-site.
Okay.
How will medical waste be handled in the facility?
I can have Mr. Carney come and testify to that, but basically, the same way medical waste is with any normal doctor's office, this is not going to produce any medical waste in excess of what you would normally find in an orthopedic practice, or, but it will be disposed of through the licensed medical disposal companies that they currently use.
So, each tenant in the building will be responsible for their own medical waste, keeping the documentation?
Yeah, whoever is in charge of the space, whether it be ambulatory care or a specialized practice, they would be handling the medical. Now, that may be coordinated through our W.J. Barnabas overall, so that they make available one contractor, but that, that's basically the way it's going to be handled.
Okay, and I know Mr. Carney didn't touch on it, and it just came to me after he had testified. Will there be a pharmacy on, on site?
I don't believe that they've, sure. Can I also correct anything that I might have said?
No, I think your statements were very accurate. There will be no on-site pharmacy there. Some of the programs will have pharmaceuticals that will be delivered directly, Surgery Center is an example.
Sure.
That would be handled through a licensed carrier who would deliver, deliver any pharmaceuticals.
Will there be pain management at this facility?
So, in the context of, not a pain management center, but in the context of pain management through a surgical program, there would be.
MRI, knee, little torn, you know, topical injection, that type of stuff?
Very possible. We won't be doing sedation procedures in the radiology suite, so we will not be performing MRIs under sedation, that is much more suited for a hospital location, but in the Surgery Center as an example, there will obviously be anesthesia provided, both minimum anesthesia as well as general anesthesia.
Okay. So, all protocols for narcotics handling will be followed by the tenant that's using them?
Absolutely, the Center, Surgery Center will be licensed by the state of New Jersey, and will have to meet all the requirements of a licensed surgery center.
Just to add to Mr. Carney's testimony, I don't think you want to confuse some of the specialized primary or other specialized, primary care or other specialized practices, orthopedic, for example, with pain control centers, which are specific practices dealing with pain management that involve a use of a panoply of drugs and other, I don't think that particular type of practice is contemplated in this facility.
Are you gonna, would you be willing to make that a condition of approval, that there would be none?
I don't know why we would want to.
I, I agree, and that's, I think, why he's asking the question.
Oh, you know, the questions, the questions come up, because over the last 30 years, you know, living here in hell, we've had to travel up to Edison, way out to yonder for these little things that needed to be addressed.
Right.
And, you know, we don't have anything per se, other than having to go to Central State or down to Lakewood to Kimball, and, you know, it was, or to Jersey Shore, for the most part.
So, as Mr. Waters explained, there are various degrees of pain centers. There are pharmaceutical pain centers where patients who primarily get prescribed narcotics, as an example, to manage their pain, but that is not a service we anticipate having in this facility. However, through the Surgery Center, with a large focus on orthopedics, there is very possible that there's pain management centers that are more procedural.
Lidocaine shots and stuff like that, right?
Which would be very typical for an in-practice, for a physician, or for, within a surgery center.
And also, to add to Ms. Beam's comments, one of the reasons why we would not want to limit, restrict practices in the resolution is, while they contemplate certain particular practices now, this facility is for the benefit of the community, and as the chairman just pointed out, there could be needs in the community that are not being met, that in the future, our W.J. Barnabas may decide to satisfy this facility, so we wouldn't want to have any kind of limitation like that.
Mr. Gerken?
I have no further questions, Mr. Gerken.
Okay, Jan?
I have, I have a couple for the engineer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carney.
Namely, we had recommended in our letter that the trash enclosure be constructed of masonry block.
I thought that's what I heard him say.
Right.
I just want to verify it, because, for the record.
Let him testify.
Mr. Roche, we're bringing you back.
Just getting my steps in, but yes.
And looking at your plan, there's one small enclosure for 65,000 square feet. I'm questioning the sizing of the enclosure, because you could have, you said that there could be five practices, plus an urgent care, plus an ambulatory care, plus, so, you know, that's a lot of stuff.
A lot of care.
Correct.
Putting casts on and all that other stuff.
There's going to be garbage.
Yes.
And recycling.
Probably the best example I can give is the facility we just did with the same group at the Monmouth Mall in Ean Town, has the same-sized facility, based on a similar square footage, if not slightly larger, and we just organized the private trash provider, the pickups, to make sure we're not in a scenario of the deficit. So, if you have to have that private trash hauler, you know, every two days, that can be arranged.
Okay. Just because, like, unlike the mall where you have a lot more area to perhaps put another enclosure, here, based upon how you're designing it, there's not, like, this vast amount of pavement to put additional enclosures. And then, the last thing, and I think it kind of ties into the buffer, but your drainage, the outlet structure goes all the way, basically, or the, to the, almost to the property line. Is there, so that means that the grading for that and the structure itself are in our 50-foot buffer, which, because right behind this is the villages. Is there the ability to pull that out of the buffer? Because that is not permitted, the grading for it and the structure itself is not allowed in the buffer.
Yeah, to clarify, when you say, when you say the buffer, I believe the plan show, or if not, they're very close to showing, none of the outlet structure or storm conveyance type equipment within the 50-foot buffer on the north side?
Right, I'm not talking about the north side, I'm talking about the east side, which is residentially zoned. So, this, the, it's, that, that property line is coincident with the villages, which is zone residential, so that whole area where your outlet goes out also necessitates a 50-foot buffer. We've identified that in our letter.
So, you're talking about the overall outfall point, Ms. Beam, to the, to the Manasquan River, that?
I, I get it, I'm just saying, this is within 50 feet, that structure right there, and the grading is within 25 feet of the property line, which we don't allow. It has to be, the grading for it and the structure itself need to be out of the 50 feet, because, just because you can see the houses along the north side, that zoning, that zoning wraps around your, your easterly property line as well.
And that?
Well, they're asking for relief for that, too. Yeah.
And that continues on the southern property line as well?
No, because the southern property line abuts commercial, and is in the, it's in the HD1 zone. I mean, if you go even to the cover sheet of the plan set, it shows very clearly the zoning map where your site is, and that the residential wraps around the northerly property line and the easterly property line.
That's my outfall, that's the property line. Is that the buffer line? No, it's over there.
I've seen this. When I go to Monmouth Park, 36, you say, wow, look at that, it's nice, yeah. You got to have them, I've been begging for this for the last 20 years.
Definitely something that you should look at, I mean, I don't know, Mr. Chair, how late you're planning on going this evening, and maybe this might be a good place to stop.
Well, we can go another 20 minutes or so if you want.
I mean, it's up to you, I, you know.
We have two more witnesses, I think.
Do we want to hear them? You want to stop here?
I mean, I, I think we should get this issue vetted out, but we still have traffic, which I'm assuming you guys are going to have a serious.
We're going to need an expiration of time extension.
We have, we have three witnesses.
You have three witnesses left.
Architect, traffic, and Ms. Coford.
Yeah, so, I mean, this maybe sounds like a pretty decent stopping point, then.
All right, next meeting, the 25th?
Yes, on the 25th, I have three applications scheduled, well, two and an extension of time. So, it's up to Mr. Waters.
Are they two new applications?
Yes, so he, he's.
We could put them first.
Yeah, they could go first.
Mr. Chairman? Can I just indulge, ask for the indulgence of the board? I understand about the time, and I understand this may be a good stopping point for the engineer, and we can put off the planner and the traffic expert, but the architect has flown here from Tennessee, and if we could, and his testimony won't be that long, if we could.
I don't know, I have some questions.
Okay.
You know, I mean, the height of the building is of particular concern.
Jan, have you seen the one up at Monmouth?
I have.
And?
It's, but it's on a mall property, it's a very different scenario, you know, it's, and it's, that whole site is made from the toes.
Jan, where, where on this map is the section that you're raising a question?
Like, where that corner is, if you take that, that basin, and you make a diagonal mark towards the corner.
The top right corner.
Yeah.
You don't have a pointer, do you?
I don't. No.
I do.
Even if the glass is. I think she's saying, I think she's saying, Jan.
Here we go, come on back here.
To the corner of the property line.
Oh, this way.
Mr. Roche is going to show you.
When you say buffer, though, Ms. Beam, are you referring to a 50-foot?
The, the residential zone is not just on the northern property line, it wraps around, so you're going to need to show us where that stops, I think it stops on the corner.
Yeah.
And how that impacts your outfall. So, I'm going to need an exhibit that shows that, that you're not, because not only is it not, is it just the structure itself, but it's any grading related to getting that structure there, also cannot be within the 50-foot, so we need to see that on an exhibit.
Yeah, I think we're clear of it, but I'll do the exhibit.
Okay, all right.
So, so, Jan, if we lower the building, can we make it wider to maintain the square footage and put a second deck on the parking?
Like, I know it looks like a lot of room based upon the thing, but they, there's environmental constraints, like, they're already encroaching into the stream corridor buffer from the township, so.
Can we put a second level on the parking and shorten, to make up for it and use some of that parking area?
I mean, I'm sure we can, but.
To spread the building out a little bit?
Podium parking is about 35,000 space, so that's a huge financial issue, but, yeah, they can put podium parking and then widen out the building in the developed area, I mean, that's going to be something they need to, expensive endeavor, for sure.
I mean.
I mean, I think the short answer is at 58.3, and I know what you're going to say, that the building itself goes to 45, but the screens on top go to 58.3, but it still all counts towards your height.
No, we understand, but I think the board needs to understand that we're not talking about occupied space.
It doesn't matter.
I know it doesn't, but it's still the mechanicals that's causing the height.
It's the massing of the building.
I understand, but it's.
I can tell you, when the U-Haul went up, that's right down the street from this, which is nowhere near 58 feet high, the general sentiment was holy, mackerel, that's gigantic. So, this is going to be now almost 20 feet higher than that, so I'm telling you that it's too high, and you guys are going to have to come up with a plan to lower the height, because, especially in this section of town, here, most of the things are two-stories, they're not even three-stories. When the U-Haul went in at three stories, we were like, oof, that's a big building. You know, if you were in a different section of Route 9, closer to southern, southern town, where we have a lot more, larger-scale development, we have the fountains, which is four-stories and other things, and now the office buildings, south of Lanes Mill Road are allowed to be four-stories, that might be a different scenario, but in this section of town, you're talking about two-story buildings, and in many instances, one-story buildings. So, I, I think you guys are going to have to rethink.
So, 45 feet is the height, plus 10%, 49 and a half?
Yeah, and they're at 58.3.
Okay. All right.
So, that's definitely something, and then, in addition to that, there were, like, large sections of the floor plans, and this is just for your edification moving forward, because I do think things are going to have to change. There are large areas in the building that are just not designated for anything, which causes some angst, especially when you're asking for relief on the parking, like, what exactly is going in those areas that are not designated for anything? Because there's big spaces on, on the architectural floor plans that aren't identified as anything. So, I, you know, I don't necessarily know that we want to, you know, now we're rolling in almost, you know, it's almost 20 after 10, and I get that they're coming from far, but I honestly, I don't necessarily know that they're not going to have to come back anyway, because I think the building's going to have to come down, and they're going to have to represent what the proposal is.
I understand Ms. Beam's comments, we will take a look at the situation and fill in some of the blank spaces.
How many square feet is this zone?
I mean, what, what can I say?
The architect.
The architect.
He's not going to win tonight.
I, I understand, and so consequently, based on that, we understand the necessity to possibly carry this to the next meeting.
Yes, but can we put you first on the agenda for the 25th of November?
You've put us first this time, but the answer is yes. It's so.
It was first this time.
So, it's, well, that's it, if it's on record, that's great, so.
Well, we would want to continue, eh?
Can I have an extension of time for the board?
30th of December?
Yes.
Yeah, until that date?
When would we be extending this to?
I think, I think the chair asked for December 1st, or November 30th?
November 25th is the next meeting, and since you're being carried, I could put you first, I don't know if that gives you enough time, or December 9th or the 16th. On the 9th, I have two applications scheduled, and the 16th, I have three.
Could I take a moment?
Yes.
The 16th, I have four. December 9th?
I don't want to be with the cemetery.
That's December 9th.
I don't want the cemetery, so.
That December 9th is the cemetery, that's why I was going to bring it up.
Is November 25th doable?
December 9th. Or December 9th, yeah.
Or do we want to go December 9th?
The 9th is the cemetery, yes.
Yeah, December 9th.
Yeah. We'll do the 25th? Okay, well, November 25th. Thank you.
Can you grant an extension through that time?
Oh, November 25th. I'm not here till November 25th. No, it's got to be December 9th. I can't do the 25th.
Eileen, what did he agree to?
It's a work in progress.
What date is the 25th? That's a...
The 25th is the Monday before Thanksgiving.
Point. 25th it is. And I'll grant an extension to the 25th.
To the 30th of November?
Yes.
Okay. So, those of us that are here, case number BA 24-01, Howell Medical Investors LLC, this expiration date is being carried to November 30th, 2024. The next date this application will be heard is on 25 November 2024.
With no further notice.
With no further notice.
Thank you.
We're good, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Board, good evening.
Good evening. Motion to adjourn? All in favor? We are adjourned. Real quickly, before we leave, Paul, hopefully you'll be back for the next meeting, but just in case. We thank you so much for all you've done for us.